Is everybody ready to begin?
I'll go ahead and read the announcement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, and March 23 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting in the Town of Southampton Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder to persons who would like to listen to, view this meeting while in progress may do so by go to zoom.us/join. Hit join the meeting in the top right of the screen. Type in meeting ID 828-8976-4994, and then the password 430-590, and hit join. Please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Now, to join in video meeting with cell phone, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store. Call in, the telephone number is 646-558-8656, or by watching Public Access TV Charter, Spectrum Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at select board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled select board meeting, it will be read at that select board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised select board meeting, it will be read at the next select board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selectman@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of the policy on public comments listed in the open time for the public on the select board agenda.
Thank you, Ed. Welcome, everyone, to the select board meeting. Today is July 28, 2020, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so this was a special meeting for the purpose primarily of signing the warrant. We got the latest version of that late this afternoon, and just want to mention that we're going to forego the select board reports. Ed, was there anything, were you also foregoing your town administrative report?
Yes. Everything else will be covered under the annual town, annual town meeting planning committee update, and then we've got one item to do under any other necessary business that cannot await the next regular August 4 select board meeting, which would be the approval of the ballot question for the debt exclusion for the dump truck.
Okay. All right, in that case, we can jump right to new business. There are two items there, approval of the annual town meeting warrant and the annual town meeting planning committee update. So we'll start with the warrant. And do, I'm going to actually, John, you wanted to say something about the current warrant in general? Do you want to do that now, or would you like us to get started and then say something along the way?
Well, it kind of ties in to the annual town meeting planning committee, getting back to that and some recent information. We just found out about, you know, the COVID cases starting to edge up there, and is there a possibility that we're going to go back to phase two instead of phase three? So the question is, the group was out there on Monday about 1:00 and set the meeting up, and we had a great turnout, and we went through everything that we needed, we believe. The list was sent out to you folks after Ed and I edited it, and we think we've got everything pretty much under control. But a question came up when we were talking about the length of the meeting, and Robert's there, so, Rainie, if you would allow him to be unmuted, I think that would be helpful.
Yep.
And also the fact that we were talking about putting a canopy up for the general people who wore masks, if you will, and a separate canopy for people who may refuse to wear a mask, but are registered voters and still want to come within the, you know, the confines of the gate we have set up. So as we were talking about it, it came up that it's going to be a long meeting, and there's a lot of planning and time spent on it. And we were trying to, at least I was trying to figure out a way to make the meeting shorter because of the possibility of people being sitting out there in the sun now without a canopy. And there's a lot, my personal opinion, and I know we voted on it last week, but to me, there's still some that we could postpone till the fall meeting and allow Robert to get through this much quicker. And so, Robert, I guess I'm going to look to you and let me know if your thoughts have changed any from the meeting we had yesterday.
Thank you, Robert Floyd, 166 College Highway. I saw a quotation today earlier, "But this virus is so contagious and insidious that even the slightest loosening of restrictions or the slightest complacency by residents gives it an opening to infect." And when our Southampton Health Director has advised us officially to limit the number of articles and we don't take heed, then I wonder what's the point of having a health director?
Okay, so we all got the email that had the ATM meeting notes. I think everybody did a phenomenal job. It seemed like there was a tremendous amount of progress made in terms of really the details that I think are warranted, and so I think it looks great. I also agree that we need to make the meeting as short as possible. I do support a one-hour meeting or less. It's going to take time to get people in, signed in, and then out again. So I don't know if we want to look at the warrant as a whole, or if we want to just go down and have a motion to approve blocks of them, or whatever. What are people's preferences?
Before you do that, we were talking about a one-hour meeting, so, and as we talked about it on Monday, it may be a one-hour meeting, but, you know, some people, the vendor for the sound will be there at 6:00, small group of us will be there at 7:00, then the people are starting to come at 8:00, then the meeting starts at 9:00, and then the meeting goes for a minimum of an hour plus. So it is multiple-hour process where people will be milling around. So I don't want people to think it's just an hour in and out. Even when you leave, you got to, you got to make sure that people leave in a coordinated effort where they're not, you know, like piled up off each other. So we're talking about the moderator releasing a row at a time, but it's almost like when you were at school, if you're quiet, you get to go first, you know?
Right, right.
It's multiple hours that people will be there.
Yep. Anybody else have a question or comment about the planning portion of the meeting?
Would you like, would you like me to read it, Rainie, at this point, and go through it?
What do you think, John? I mean, that basically says the day of the event and ATM setup. I think that might be helpful for the public. I mean, I don't know if this is the final word on things.
These are, these are the combined notes that Ed and I put together. So, I mean, people were there, Robert was there, Tammy was there. So if anybody sees something out of whack, let us know, but this is the working notes of the committee, if you will. I think we, Ed, did you share it with the rest of the committee yet? I know it just got finished earlier today.
Yes, I sent it out this afternoon.
Yeah, no, I think you guys, you guys did a great job. It's way advanced from our last meeting. I mean, I think it's very, very specific and very clear in terms of what has to be done, and a lot of the details that I hadn't even thought about, you have thought about. So that was really good to see. I think it would be good to, it'll take a little minute just to read it, but at some point, we need to have something posted, I guess, on the town website and whatever, I'm sure, in terms of letting the voters know or letting the town residents know what they're walking into.
And we're doing that, and I'm glad you got Tammy muted, because I say this tongue-in-cheek, because she volunteered to do all the promotions, or a lot of the promotions. She actually was there, and she didn't raise her hand, but we asked her because she's so good at going on Facebook and all these other social media, so she agreed to take a lot of the advertising. And then Robert has some, and Ed has some of it. So I think unless you, we missed something, I think we're going to cover all the areas. And Robert also has his night of going over the warrant articles, I forget the exact date.
Yeah, and probably, probably, you know, the only thing I'd really like to mention that has changed since yesterday, because yesterday at the meeting, we had talked about doing the rental canopy for everyone. And then when John called the vendor about it, he actually got another answer about how many people could fit under it versus we had the other day. And then talking with Jerry today, it's a legislative body. It's, it's actually exempt from any requirements, yeah, of six feet social distancing or anything else. I don't think that's smart to do. But the other piece with, that came out today is that we are in Massachusetts, starting to see a little uptake, uptake in the positive cases of COVID-19. The, the Board of Health sent along a couple of articles to that effect. In fact, I think it's the Massachusetts Medical Association. It actually had come out and recommended going back to phase two, you know. So, you know, looking at that, you know, would we want to actually put people under a canopy or a tent with more confinement, maybe less airflow? At this point, it would not be my recommendation to do a canopy or a tent and go back to what we originally planned, to just open air.
And I guess to expand a little bit, the vendor for the sound, he is going to provide three mics for the general audience. We're going to have at least two aisles, so instead of everybody coming up to that one mic, we'll have several mics for the audience. And if we have a canopy or an area for people without masks, they'll also have a separate one, and he's going to bring the covers that fit over so that we can take care of that. So we'll have much more on the microphones out in the audience than we've had in the past. So if they're spread out, we can strategically position the microphones so people don't have to necessarily walk by anybody closer than that six foot.
I'd like us to share the notes that were created, because 11 heads are better than one, and maybe it's storming, maybe something may have fallen between the cracks because we, it worked so well. So I'd really encourage that everybody hear what we have planned, and maybe somebody might want to add something.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I just want to mention about the canopy. I agree, I don't think we should be confining anybody, especially people that don't have masks. And the other thing is, I don't think we should be providing fans either. I can see the point of it in terms of it being hot, but moving air is not a good idea. I mean, right now, they're not advising anybody to use, you know, in public, to use nebulizers and inhalers and things like, right now, actually, moving air is not a good idea.
Yeah, the fans were tied into the canopy, so those are off too.
There goes my fans.
We'll always be your fan, Robert.
Okay, so, John, if you, or Ed, actually, if you want to lead us through, you know, the document you came up with, that would be great.
Sure, and this is a combined effort between John and myself. So ATM committee meeting notes for July 27, 2020, which was, we met there yesterday afternoon out at La Bree Field, was attended by Jerry Swanson, Tammy Valunis, Lucy Dalton, Chief Illingsworth, Chief Workman, Ed Gibson, Carl Keener, Robert Floyd, and John Martin, and Jen from East Hampton Media, and Jim Powers from CJC Sound. The annual town meeting will be at 9:00 a.m., La Bree Field, within the baseball diamond. Gates will open at 8:00 a.m. There is an American flag is on site to hold the pledge. ATM setup, day prior to ATM, porta potties set in place, Ricky's porta potties ordered will be placed behind dugout, which is closest to the parking lot.
Can I just ask a question? Is one of them, at least one of them, handicapped accessible?
They're both handicap accessible.
Okay, good.
Just a note on that, they're not, they're behind the dugout because there is a gate closer to the dugout, so they don't have to come in and out the main gate where all the tents set up is, so they can just go to the side gate and go out more private.
That's good. And there is a plan, then, for them to be sanitized in between use?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, still under ATM, the day prior to ATM, the layout for social distancing and aisles marked out day, day prior to ATM, highway department. There will be two aisles separating the three seating areas. The parking lot will be marked out, and the handicap parking signs will be put in place for, by the highway department. Day of the event, 6:00 a.m., CJC Sound vendor setup, two technicians will provide up to 50 covers for the microphones for replacement. 7:00 a.m., chair and table setup, only the provided chairs will be used. Lucy, Ian, and John Martin, Ed, and any others will help do that setup. Trash barrels to be placed close to the porta potties by the highway department. 7:00 a.m., podium and riser, two feet high for the moderator setup. 7:00 a.m., EMS and fire tent setup, ambulance in place before 8:00 a.m. 8:00 a.m., gates open for registered voters. Tables for check-in will be outside the main gate. Only registered voters will be allowed inside the fenced ATM area. This is a precaution in case contact tracing is needed for COVID-19. Others can use the bleachers outside the fence. 9:00 a.m., town meeting begins. One table for select board and one for finance committee. Only the chair of each to use that microphone.
Ed, I'm just going to stop you there. That was my note with a question mark.
Yeah.
I think we were talking about, does it make sense with just the chair, the finance committee, the chair of the select board, to speak and kind of isolate that mic to that person? What's your thoughts, Rainie?
I definitely don't think the mic should be shared. You know, I had mentioned that Chris offered to do this community preservation ones. I'm fine with whoever does it, I just don't think it should be shared. And I also think that five of us are not going to sit at a table six feet apart, so I don't know that we need to be at a table necessarily. I just don't think that five people will sit, will be at a table, but we can work that out.
Yeah, I think the table is more for the microphone and the speaker, and the others could social distance.
Yeah.
So can I ask you a question about the, the microphone covers? There's 50, so potentially, we only have 50 people who could speak? We're limited to 50.
Correct.
If you look at it that way, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, what Rainie's saying, I mean, what we're talking about, is how many of the select board members, and how many times are we going to go back and forth? I mean, among ourselves normally at a meeting like this, going through the warrants, that could, that could be 50.
Right, but that's what I'm wondering. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, only one person from the finance committee, one person from the select board will be using the mic, and the 50 are reserved for the public.
Right, okay.
I mean, if we want more, we can order more. Are they like $2 apiece?
$2 each. We need a table for the deputy moderator and the town clerk to be situated near the moderator.
I ordered seven, Robert, and that was included in the original, so I think we got you covered.
Yeah, and then at, at the table for the finance committee, there'll be a second mic, and the town accountant can sit there for, and utilize that one. Let's see, EMS will set up the tent inside, inside the fence and have ambulance set up outside the fence. Police will share the fire EMS tent, fire EMS.
Wait, just one second. Actually, Ricky speaks probably as much as anybody in terms of clarification of the articles. I'm not really sure, obviously, we want the finance committee to, you know, chime in, but I just don't, I, I don't know if it's possible to have them not have to share a mic.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, didn't we have two mics at that table and two mics at the select board table?
Yes, that is the setup, so.
So we have one for Ricky and one for finance.
All right, good, thanks.
And it's a six-foot table, so one can sit at one end and one can sit at the other end.
Okay.
Let's see, where was I? Police will share the fire EMS tent. Fire EMS tent will have cold bottled water and a cooling station. CJC Sound will also broadcast on FM for those who are hard of hearing. We could advise to bring radios and headsets if desired for those individuals. Voters without masks will require to sit in a separate area. Non-residents will, are, will be, have a designated area outside the fenced-in ball field. CJC Sound will provide three wireless mics for the main audience with masks, one wireless microphone for the audience without masks, two each at the finance committee table, the select board table, and one at the moderator podium. Vendor to provide staff and disposable microphone covers that will be changed between speakers. Voters will be allowed to leave one row at a time by the moderator at the end of the meeting. Porta potties will be sanitized in between users by the highway department. Then tasks, sound system provided by CJC, six wired and four wireless mics. Ed, order 120 chairs, seven six-foot tables, delivery for 7:00 a.m. John M. We had the one to two canopies and pedestal fans highlighted with a question mark, so we won't include those. Let's see, town meeting and election workers. Lucy Dalton, she confirmed she has four people assigned for that task. Handicap reserve signs for seating, John Martin. Handicap signs for the parking area, the highway department is assigned to Ed. Supply a 10 by 10 canopy for non-mask wearers, John Martin. Supply cold bottled water and coolers for attendees, John Martin. Line the parking lot and the field, or paint dots on the inside of the field by the highway department. Task is assigned to Ed. Volunteers for parking and seating ushers. Task is assigned to Tammy. Sign at the entrance to La Bree Field, signed to Lucy Dalton. Advertising for the lion sign, the mother's club sign, the reminder, and the community Facebook page, Tammy, and she has already confirmed that she's reached out to those groups. Advertising for the Gazette, the town website, and Cone Red, Ed. The moderator's page, Robert. East Hampton Media, set up three cameras, Jen Ramsey. Set up media point at perimeter outside fence, John Martin. Porta potties, two handicap units located outside of dugout. Ed, I confirmed that earlier today. The riser for the moderator, we're still trying to locate, that's, John's been digging into that.
Yeah, can I stop you there, Ed? Because we were talking about if we couldn't find the riser to put the podium on, Robert wanted to be able to see everybody like he normally does. We suggested the back of a pickup truck, but because we were talking about a canopy, that would obstruct the view. Robert, will that work now?
Yeah, and I hear there's, somebody had a trailer, maybe Carl, that had three sections open, so there's two possibilities.
So we'll get you, we'll get you something that may not be normal, but we'll, we'll get it.
That'd be normal, was mine.
Hand sanitizer for the porta potty areas being provided by Chief Illingsworth. Umbrella for the hand sanitizer table is being provided by Carl Keener. Water is, task is being done by John Martin. Coolers and ice by John Martin, and then cones, maybe a combination of the highway or the police department. And then at the end, there's a reminder to John Martin to bring a 10 by 10 canopy and card table for the hand sanitizer.
My own personal reminder, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Tammy's got her hand up. Canopies or not, sorry. Go ahead, Chris.
No, just noting that Tammy has her hand up just a moment.
Ed, can you unmute Tammy, please?
I could. There, she's unmuted.
Thank you. If we are not doing the big tent for all of the main people that are going to be voting, why are we doing a 10 by 10 canopy for non-mask wearers?
We won't, we won't be doing that now, because we weren't sure on the canopy for the others.
Okay.
I was, I'm still going to bring it.
Lucy and them under one, but why are we giving them one?
No, I will bring it and let Lucy and company, or whoever needs it, use it.
Thank you.
Indoors at the Norris, we have two sections with one aisle, basically. So here, we're going to have three sections, two aisles, and actually, a third aisle with the fourth separate section for the non-mask wearers. So when the counting of any ballots, that's going to take much longer per vote count than, than we're used to at the Norris.
We don't specifically spell it out here, but we're getting signs for people with limited mobility or other handicaps to, to put them in an area closest to the front, so when they come and go.
We're going to put them in the front rows for the three sections, and then that fourth separate section will be the non-mask wearers. Okay.
Correct.
Other questions for the ATM group?
No, it sounds like you've done a nice job.
I'd like to thank everybody, and everybody stepped up to the plate. It was an incredible meeting, and particularly Tammy Valunis, who basically, as a citizen, not as a department head, really was the glue to keep everyone together, so I want to recognize Tammy, kudos.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Can I just ask, will you need any extra help that morning?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Do we need help on the light work?
So we, we should plan on being there certainly before 8:00. I mean, by, by 7:00 would be good?
Yeah.
So we're going to start laying out the chairs. I, I talked to the vendor, the local vendor for the chairs, and they agreed to bring them there right at 7:00, so otherwise, we were going to store them in one of our garages and truck it down there, but they said, no, we, we wouldn't make you do that. So they were very easy to work with, and they gave the town a bit of a discount, they said.
So they're setting up the chairs?
No, we're setting up the chairs. They drop it off on a pallet.
And do we have gloves for putting the chairs up?
I bought a box of gloves today.
Okay. Everybody that's putting chairs up should have gloves on.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And then someone has to tear it down, too, at the end, right? You're going to need more?
Correct.
Okay.
Have we checked with other towns just to kind of find out, like, you know, have there been any problems? How'd you, you know, surmount them? What's, you know, any advice? I mean, just so many other towns have had their town meeting. Robert, have you had any feedback from other towns about what things to, you know, watch out for, or that sort of thing?
What I've observed, there are people doing due diligence, keeping a minimum amount of articles, and posting what went well and not really talking about what may not have.
Okay.
And Rainie, there's a Cindy with her hand up, but I don't see that she has any video.
Okay. Cindy, I don't see who, there's a, we have a policy that you have to be on video and audio to be recognized, so if you have video capability, if you could just please put your video on. In the meantime, when will it be called for weather in the event that the weather isn't good? Will there be a time established that by such and such a time, if the weather doesn't look good, it will be held the following Saturday, or what will, and how will that be publicized?
I guess, in my opinion, is we're going to watch the weather out, and then if we decide we're not going to hold it, we're going to have to go through the same sources that we used to advertise in the beginning. And we'll, we'll let them know that when we advertise, to watch the site.
Can we do Cone Red?
Well, that's part of what we're using to advertise it, yes.
I think there should probably be a cutoff time, and so when the, all this information is publicized to the town, that we say, in the event of weather, by such and such a time, a notice will go out, just so that people aren't all wondering at 7:00, is this, you know, is this going to happen or not? I think if it's really clear what the call-off plan will be, that would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, and that may be like, something like 6:00 a.m. that morning. I, I'm one that doesn't trust the weatherman for what the forecast is. I'm one that doesn't trust the weatherman for what the forecast is the night before for that morning, so.
Yeah.
Cindy is waving, too. She's on video now, Rainie.
Okay, so thank, can you unmute her, please?
She is.
Okay, Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. Two questions. Hi there, and I don't know that I heard the answer. Can people bring their own chairs? And second part of the question is, because it could be quite sunny, there won't be canopies, what if somebody shows up with umbrellas? It could obscure vision of other people if they're holding parasols or umbrellas? Those are my questions.
No to their own chairs, and if they're gonna bring parasols and umbrellas, that's totally up to the moderator, but might think of having to relegate them to the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, I use the example of having a minivan going into a drive-in movie, you get to go in the back row because of the height of the vehicle, so you really can't be obstructing, but if somebody wants to wear it, they'll sit in the rear.
Thanks, Cindy. Any other questions? Okay, so let us know, John, Ed, if there's anything that we can do to help.
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
We'll pull another meeting before then, just to firm everything up, and we'll get back to you on that.
Okay, great. So, do we want to address the issue about the quorum at this particular point?
Yeah, we can, that was something we wanted to talk about. We can reduce it, if I remember right, we can't do it any more than 10% of what the normal quorum is.
Right.
But if we went, right now it's 50, because we increased it from 25 to 50, I think a year or so ago. If we want to lower it to a smaller number, we've gotta do it in a timely fashion, gotta talk about it tonight, we gotta post it, a meeting next week, so that we have the timeframe. So Robert, would you like to weigh in on that? Because that's what we discussed yesterday.
Yeah, I'll read the regulations, law 4777, Section 7A notwithstanding, Section 13 of Chapter 39 of the General Laws, or any other general special law. Charter provision or bylaw to the contrary, a town may act by vote of its select board or board of selectmen in consultation, and with approval of the town moderator, given a plate of brownies, well, that's not in there, to prescribe the number of voters necessary to constitute a quorum at any town meeting held during the governor's March 10, 2020 Declaration of a State of Emergency, at a number that is less than the number that would otherwise be required by law, town by law or a town charter, provided, however, that the number of vote is necessary to constitute a quorum should not be less than 10% of the number that would otherwise be required. There's four parts. B, the select board or board of selectmen shall publish notice of its intention to consider an adjustment of town meeting quorum requirements under this section, not less than seven days before the vote of the select board or board of selectmen. The select board or board of selectmen shall provide for adequate means of public access that will allow interested members of the public to clearly follow the deliberation of the select board or board of selectmen on making a quorum adjustment as those deliberations are occurring. C, and again, one more after C, not less than 10 days after a vote of the select board or board of selectmen to adjust the quorum requirement under this section, the town clerk shall notify the attorney general of the adjusted quorum requirement. Indeed, the last, all actions taken pursuant to this section are hereby ratified, validated, and confirmed to the same extent as if the town meeting had been conducted in accordance with all other applicable laws, charter provisions, ordinance, and bylaws.
Okay, so it sounds like if we're interested in taking this action, it would mean reducing the quorum to 45 instead of 50, and that we would have to post something, I would imagine, immediately or tomorrow, and then seven, no less than seven days later, then we could take a vote to reduce the quorum of the town meeting. Am I understanding that right?
Almost, you can, in our case, you can reduce it down to 10.
Oh, okay.
Actually, five.
Actually, yeah.
You can reduce it down. Some towns in the east of our Commonwealth have no quorum whatsoever, a zero quorum, and they have no problems at meetings.
Right, so we have to reduce it to five, by five.
The fear is, for whatever reason, those not wanting to stay leaving while the meeting's in progress, and as long as there are no votes counted, or somebody doesn't call a question of a quorum, we could proceed even though we had a fraction of our quorum. But once the votes are counted for a particular vote, or somebody calls a question of a quorum, and you count, and you're less than a quorum, then you need to consider where you're gonna get bodies quickly, or continue to the meeting until a time certain.
Okay, so what would be your recommendation of a number? I know what it costs for the 10%, but what would, what would you think, given your experience with the number of meetings you've managed over the years?
There's gonna be a lot of town employees there for all the reasons, so certainly, our rule number works, 2025, push comes to shove, we want business done, whatever that business is. This is only one time, so 20 would satisfy everyone.
And I guess my only worry on that is we have 20 people out of 6,000 deciding on what's happening, you know? That's the scary part.
Yep, that's true.
That's why we went from 25 to 50, you know?
But this is a pandemic, so everything has an asterisk to it, and, you know.
Yeah, and that's why I think we should limit what gets approved at this meeting, because it may turn into a very small group deciding what goes on.
That's another good vantage viewpoint of this, yeah.
What are people comfortable, if at all, lowering the quorum?
Well, you may not, you may wanna hold off and discuss that at a meeting, if you decide to entertain lowering a quorum, too.
But we have to post.
Right, seven days.
At least seven days.
So our next meeting is the fourth, so we're bumping up against all the deadlines, are we not?
Yep.
Yeah. That would still work, right, Robert? That's.
Barely under the wire, but yeah, it wouldn't be a slam dunk, but it would, it would count.
I mean, what, what other information would we be looking for to make a decision later rather than now? I mean.
But I, I see nothing, and to me, it's arbitrary. These are strange circumstances. We're all in this together, we're all rowing, walking each other home, so it's an arbitrary number, and those who want to show up that would exceed the minimal quorum, fantastic. But, but unfortunate if we only had 40 people, 44, 46, and we would have to continue the meeting, set everything up again, it could be a weather delay, that's not worth the risk. I'm against lowering quorums, but under this situation, I think let's run with it.
No.
My suggestion would be 30, but that's just a number in my head that sounded reasonable, is a little more than what we used to have it at.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would support that, because as Robert said, if more people show up, that more people get to vote. It doesn't limit that, that just, you know, it's just a floor.
And we can advertise that, so that people know, so make it important that they do show up if they want to vote in this.
Our history of town meetings is that when we run low of a quorum of 25, we'd go out in the hallway, get the smokers, bang on the bathroom doors, get people, parents watching their kids playing ball games, and bring them in to, to make the quorum. And at one time, we had the meeting at the town hall, we had 21 people. It was in the morning, and people were sent to Dunkin' Donuts to get South Hampton voters down, and we made a quorum, and we finished it, so, but this is a field, so we don't have that give and take.
Understood.
So do we need to add the form of motion?
Sounds to me like we have to agree to post an intention to reduce the quorum. Do we have to come up with a number, and then based on that, seven days later, then vote on it? So I think if people are in agreement about reducing the quorum, the question is, can we just say, we would like to vote next time to reduce the quorum, please put out a public notice?
Yes.
Or do we have to actually say, we would like to have X number of people be the quorum?
The, the language was for voters to witness your deliberation. So right now, you're deliberating. The concept is to deliberate down the road, so no number needed tonight.
Okay, so I imagine having a motion, then, to say that we would like to discuss at the next select board meeting, reducing the quorum for the annual town meeting.
It's, it's seven days, so I don't know how that satisfies it, because that's the next Tuesday, so you're gonna need to move your fourth meeting date to maybe the sixth, you can't do.
Oh, I see.
Or the fifth, or whatever date you work out, but you need that seven days at least to post.
Well, and the other question here is, and I can read this either way, so, and before I forget, Cindy's got her hand up again, but there's two, two portions of this, and it says, "The select board publishes notice of its intention to reduce or otherwise adjust the quorum requirement not less than seven days before the vote of the select board." Publish, doesn't say how, but publish. And then further on, it says, "Notice may also be published in other ways, via website, social media platforms, and local cable access channels, et cetera." So, does the first one actually publish, refer to publishing in a newspaper? Which, we'd need a couple of days to actually get it into the newspaper. So, you know, that number, that number one, and then, you know, I could read the, "Notice may also be published," is, okay, is also additional, or is that an alternative method? So.
I'm looking at it, and it says, unlike the normal 48 hours advanced posting notice, so I'm looking at, the notice you're talking about is the same as when we post a meeting for 48 hours. We've gotta do it, instead of 48 hours, we've gotta do seven days minimum. I don't think it changes the definition of notice within that meeting.
All right.
Um, would you please unmute Cindy if she's still muted?
I can do that.
And Tammy has also raised her hand.
I do not have my hand up, so.
That must be Tammy. Thank you.
Okay, Cindy's unmuted.
Cindy, did you want to say something?
Thought you, well, I thought she was, hang on.
She does have her hand raised, maybe it was still up.
No, she said she didn't have her hand raised when he unmuted her.
Okay.
Well, it's funny, when I, when I hover over, it says, okay, there it is, unmute, there we go.
I think it's Tammy that has her hand up.
I do not have my hand up.
No, right.
I think Tammy does have her hand up.
Yes. Now, that's interesting, because I show Cindy, but not Tammy, but go ahead.
I'm the same way. Yep.
Whoever would like to speak, please do.
Tammy Valunas, 298 College Highway. Oh, shoot, I forgot what I was gonna say.
We're talking about the quorum, Tammy.
Oh, thank you. Um, can, if it, does it qualify if we get it out on Facebook tonight, that we've notified, that we've attempted to start the notify, so that we could still have it at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting?
I wouldn't think so, usually when they talk about public notice.
No, because the meeting would start at 6:00.
Oh, okay. All right. Sorry, I was trying to.
Can we put a notice on our website and others, and then just reschedule our meeting for the 6th?
If, Ed, if all we're worried about is the meeting was started at 6:00, if we could start the meeting later, it's just gonna be a very short meeting.
Yeah, true.
Have a meeting at 7:00.
As you posted now, though, you gotta like, get it up now.
Right, it's already, it's already 10:00.
You can get it up right now.
6:00 works for the August 6th, but 7:00 is the moderator's information session in town hall at 7:00.
The other possibility is meeting on the 11th.
Well, the other thing I can do is I can run out there right now, put together a very quick agenda that will get amended later on, and list it as being a public notice for a hearing at 7:00 PM within that meeting.
I mean, I'm okay with the 5th or the 6th, if you guys want to change it, I don't know what your schedules look like.
I don't want to do another meeting, so we either change the one we have, or we're not, or for me, I don't want to do it.
Do it on the 4th.
What's that?
I agree with Matt, one meeting.
Yeah, I don't want to do another meeting, for me, this isn't, this isn't that important.
But you were saying you would do it on a different date if you just changed the date, correct?
Fine with changing the date, I just don't want to add another meeting for this.
I agree.
Can everybody make the 6th?
Yes.
Sure. Okay, is there anybody that cannot make the 6th? It should be a very quick meeting, I know you're gonna need the Zoom, so the question is, are they gonna, if we're gonna switch the meeting from the 4th to the 6th, I don't know, we may have other agenda items that will keep it, will make it more than an hour meeting, I don't want to interfere with your meeting, Robert.
Thank you.
That's the only, that's the only issue.
And what was the tie-in, that Lucy had to do something with the attorney general? There was a timeframe there, too, right?
She has to notify the attorney general no less than 10 days, but essentially, it's the, similar to notifying once bylaws and the like are passed at a town meeting, so there's no answer needed to come back from the attorney.
Yeah, and it's within 10 days of the vote.
Okay.
The 6th is not 10 days.
No, no, it's, the town clerk has to notify the attorney general within 10 days of the vote.
Okay.
Okay. Well, Ed, I don't know if you heard, but the only concern I have is that if we're switching the 4th to the 6th, that we're gonna have a lot of other agenda items in addition to the public hearing that will interfere with Robert's town meeting review of the articles. I don't want to bump up against him.
We could do that Heidi football thing way back when, and then they switched things on.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's possible. That is the, the regular meeting, and like I say, I can, I could list it for, well, right now, it's before 7:00, so I could, if I could get it on before 7:00, I could list it for, within that meeting on the, is it the 3rd or the 4th?
Before, yeah.
As being, you know, 7:00 or 7:15, or what have you.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I mean, are we, are we gonna be able to go from the 4th to the 15th without any meeting? Right now, that's the plan.
Yeah, we said at the 4th, we would review that and decide.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted, we should just do a quick 11th, you know, of the quorum.
Yeah, and just, just a note, not to complicate anything, but as we were talking about maybe needing to do a special meeting, just to have the, the right number of people possible for the elder birthday thing, we were talking a Wednesday, so that could either be the 5th or the 12th, whichever day was better. And I, I was thinking the 12th, because I was figuring we'd have a meeting on the 4th, and I didn't want to have a, another thing there, but we said that if we wanted select board, more than two people to go, that we'd need to advertise it as a meeting. So if we had that for the 12th, it would be late afternoon, like maybe 4:00 or something.
Okay, and that's a Wednesday anyway, so I don't, I think we would stay away from that, I think we're talking about possibly, um, okay, decision time. Ed, why don't you just post a meeting, and include a discussion about the quorum, and then we can, and then we'll have options, we'll plan on having it next time around, a public hearing at 7:00, and then we can put additional notices, but that'll be our initial notice. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Why don't we make a motion? So it's in the books. Who would like to make a motion?
I'm, well, go ahead. Complicated at this point, no, just, just move that we post a notice that the select board is, will be considering setting a new quorum number in light of the upcoming annual town meeting.
Sounds good. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Francine and then John. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Dishman, I.
Fall's eye.
Rowland, I.
Bart, I.
Then Groden, I, in our usual order. Okay, Ed, I.
I'm going to disappear for a few minutes while I do that.
Okay. Okay, so, so we'll suspend then further discussion about the number, and we'll just pick it back up again next Tuesday, August 4th, and we'll post a public meeting for 7:00 PM. And we could take care of all the business before, after that. So pretty much the only other item on the agenda is the warrant. So I'm not sure if we should wait until Ed gets back. It sounds like we probably should.
Oh, sorry to interrupting. Legally, this is a hearing, so there needs to be a day and a time for a hearing. You know, 7:05, 7:10.
Yes, that's what I said, August 4th at 7:00.
But August is your meeting at 7:00, not when the hearing begins. I believe that needs.
No, the meeting's at 6:00, Robert.
Oh, okay, sorry.
The hearing's at 7:00, the meeting's at 6:00. So that's why I said we can take care of all the business before the hearing.
Excellent.
Yep. Anybody okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So we can discuss the, we'll hold off from discussing what people, what number of people are comfortable with, because if the public is supposed to be a part of that, then we'll just hold off from now. Okay, so what I'm looking at right now is, I believe, the final warrant. It's done, it's 22 articles. I know that there were a few emails that went out from Ed today.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Okay, then one of these is no longer. I think it must be the ambulance one, possibly. This, I'm looking at one that was sent out late this afternoon.
Yeah, the latest email is a 224.
I got one at 4:00 something.
Four, about 4:15. It's where he combined the two for the school. He combined the oven and the hood.
Oh, I got the 4:15 one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a 4:15 one, I think is the last one.
4:15 one's the last one, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'm looking at it now then, so.
That's 21, 21 articles.
Twenty-one articles, right.
Plus the, so, excuse me, Robert Floyd, plus the town budget is annually divided, divided the question into 11 separate parts. So it would be 21 plus the 11 for voting, and plus any amendments anybody would make from the floor.
So it would be covered by its sections, correct? You said that the ATM, the budget one is divided into 11 votes?
Yes.
Do we have to do it that way?
Yes.
Why?
Because I think it's unfair as moderator to be responsible for the citizens of the town to say, "All in favor of a $17 million budget? Raise your hand or pose, say nay. This is, we, we have to do this right." And we've been doing it historically this way, and it goes quicker than it historically did when we took one vote.
So you actually do a motion for each of the departments, Robert? Is that how it works?
For each of the sections, yes.
Yeah, the each category.
Yeah.
Each category, and it goes much, much faster, and keeping everybody on the same page versus going from one item to another and back and forth and forgetting the momentum. That surprised me, but it seems to be the most efficient and the most favorable to the voters.
I agree, it's less confusion. So if they don't follow it.
Yeah, they think they're getting more of an opportunity to weigh in, and even though they have more of an opportunity, they rarely exercise that opportunity, but it's there.
Okay, so we had an email from John as the committee member, and we had an email also from Jerry Swanson recommending that we, you know, critically look at the articles and only have articles that are required for, that can't be delayed. And so do you want to go through down the list of them and look at each one individually and approve them individually? Would someone like to propose any to be removed? I mean, how would you like to proceed?
I think one, none. I don't know if Ed talked about it in his email, but the funding for the one-ton truck, he wanted to do that separately off of the, off of an article. So when he comes back, I think that'll eliminate one.
So he's, he's suggesting removing Article 6?
I believe he, he has a different way of doing it, is, is what I understood.
I can, I can speak to that if you'd like.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't want to save some time here. Ed's going to recommend removing that article, mostly because we have the ability to put that on our election ballot for this coming election, and then take care of it at town meeting, any, at any date with no time limitation after that. So it would just be a reversal of the sequence, where we would do a ballot at election for the dump truck, for a, you know, proposition dead exclusion, two and a half override, that the question would be formulated as such. The voters would vote at the annual town election, or at the next election, and then subsequently we would need to approve that at our next town meeting, and it would, at that point, if it passed the ballot, it would be a formality, really. And there's no time commitment associated with the distance between the two. So it would save some time.
I thought, though, that when this first came up and we voted to sort of forego the larger truck, that there was some possibility that if things were, you know, moved along and it was approved, that the highway department might actually be able to.
Yeah, the truck, exactly.
Do it by February? Is that still the case?
Yes, I mean, that obviously is still the case. I mean, look, I, I'll just speak to the, he's not back yet. I'm just going to speak to this overall. I've been through, I've, I've read the town warrant. I don't know if you guys agree or disagree. I mean, I, I think that we've been through this with a fine-tooth comb already. I feel like all of these articles in here are necessary and urgent and required to get done, and I also don't see how we, how we, how these things take a while. I mean, for me, I've experienced not nearly as many as probably Robert has, but I, I don't see us hesitating on a lot of these things, especially at town, especially at a town meeting that's out, that's outdoors and potentially hot. Like, these things don't feel like controversy to me. So for me, I'm, I'm comfortable with the way the warrant reads at this, at the present time.
Who else would like to speak to the warrant in general or individually?
I guess, is there any flexibility the day of? Because I, I imagine that the annual budget is going to take the most time, I'm, I'm assuming. Is there any ability, let's say we're going into an hour, an hour and a half, to, at that point in time, make a decision to pass over some of these and put them on the warrant for the next special town meeting? Can we make that decision that day? Once we get the sense of the flow?
I mean, I made senses that it would be, but have to come back the next day.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that. I mean, under what authority?
You, you can't, you can't table it for the next meeting?
We can table it to a time certain, normally the next day, if and only if the majority approves it. That's always the case. The town has put articles on in the past with the knowledge that it more than likely would be passed over. But essentially, once you have an article on the warrant, you're kind of committed to it. Anybody in the audience can make a motion, not the select board. The select board is doing this only by tradition to read the articles. But somebody, and this has happened before, where the select board, four years ago-ish, maybe, refused to comment on a particular motion under an article, and somebody in the audience, having a printed copy, simply stood up and read the motion, and the ball was in the audience, the voters' court.
All right, well.
Do we have a sense of, of the reality of us having a special town meeting, like maybe in October or something? Can we talk about what that might be? I realize that once we'll, we'll get a real budget somehow, we'll get some better ideas from the state about what money we're getting, we're going to have to go back and look at the budget again, right, at, at a special town meeting? And are we talking early October? Are we talking January? What are we, what are we thinking about? And could we kind of nail that down? I think that would help us figure out whether there is some leeway here to maybe push some of these off for, you know, six weeks versus four months.
What I'm seeing from other towns is that they're expecting a cut. And as soon as the Commonwealth announces that cut, then, then the towns are going to scramble to have a special town meeting to react, to adjust to the cut.
Yeah. So the likelihood of having a special town meeting in October, for example, or, is, is pretty, pretty good.
Ed needs a weigh-in that, but that's what I'm hearing all, from all over, and the idea that if in October, people wear sweaters and jackets and, you know, the heat won't be an issue. Seeing that it's probably more than likely going to be outdoors and not indoors.
Right, okay.
And the fact that we would have one town meeting under our belt already, and we could see how well or not our system for August works.
Okay.
I'm seeing quite a few articles for Norris. I thought the plan was to put them into two.
Yeah, Ed asked me about that today. I, I couldn't, I couldn't recall specifically. I thought we had just decided to combine, you know, we can talk about that for sure. I thought we had just decided to combine the kitchen ones, because that was the obvious com- combination, but that the other ones are kind of unrelated to one another.
Yeah, I think we had decided that we would combine the oven and the fire suppression hood, and the rest of the Norris ones would be in, so it was going to be three and two.
Right.
Well, yeah, a total of four.
Four, but yes.
You mean total of four.
A total of four instead of five.
It's two articles, right. So right now, the sort of, so three of them would be bundled into one, and two would be bundled into one. So there would be two articles for Norris.
Well, so that's what we were talking about. I'm not so sure that, that we agreed to bundle the three that are separated out at the last meeting.
I'm pretty sure we did.
Yeah. I, I agreed to allow it to be bundled without agreeing to divide the question. It still could be divided during a meeting.
Right.
Getting, getting back to the smaller ones, they can go, they can go more efficiently with less time. Once you start to bundle, you create a furry little monster that no one's used to, and that can prolong the meeting more than we intended.
So your recommendation would be leave it as it is right now, Robert?
If, yeah, yeah. Combine the two for the kitchen.
Right.
And the other three, it is, leave them separate, and it doesn't create more of a lightning rod approach.
Yeah, I hear you.
There he is.
I mean, we have to, we, we have to consider the fact that, like, we've done, we, we've done a ton of work already eliminating a lot of these articles. I mean, there's a ton of articles that have already been tabled. Like, it's not like we haven't done this work previously. I just want to remind everybody of that.
Yeah, we also just, you know, I mean, I, I feel that it wasn't unanimous for sure. And the other thing was that we also heard from John Martin, who's on the committee, and Jerry Swanson, who's on the committee, with a request to reduce them. So that's happened.
The request from Jerry Swanson, the way that I read it, was just to have a short town meeting. It wasn't necessarily looking at the warrant as it exists at this point in day and time to reduce them. It was just an overall suggestion to make sure that it's agreed.
It was specific, being there and having others present, the numbers were discussed. She was aware of the last meeting, and she reiterated what she had in the letter, that this is a pandemic and they need to be financial articles. So she was pretty demonstrative during the.
And I'll confirm that also.
I, I know, we had a split vote here on the pickleball course, and I, I'd be honest with you, I always have, I have to shake my head when I look at that, because there's, there's no way that that's critical. I understand to see only one or two games that you can play, but if it gets passed, it won't be built until, you know, October, and so.
Johnny, you don't have to go too far. I was about ready to speak. But one question first. On revolving funds, didn't we talk about that article that we did not need to put that in there if we were not changing the amount of revolving funds?
And for the spending limits, we do. We do not, we do not have to leave the approval of the actual revolving funds themselves because we have put it into a bylaw. But for the spending limits, we have to do that every year.
That does have to remain as an article?
Yes, it does.
Okay, all right. So then with that, following on, John, you, you preempted me. I have gone back through, and I am certainly one of the proponents of, not only on the CPC committee, but on the pickleball, pickleball article. But at this point in time, trying to go ahead with what Rini was putting forth last meeting in terms of absolute safety issues and absolute financial issues, I can't make a good justification for it, so I'm willing to say we can leave off Article 21.
And I.
And put it on, and put it on the special town meeting, however. This is not to kill it. We still want it, but as long as we can have a, a special town meeting in October, I think, you know, a, a few weeks of, of difference there is not going to be that big a deal. And you're right, it won't be constructed this year. We might have started something, but it won't be finished by any means. So I think just to start the ball rolling in terms of discussion of things that we might look at taking off in order to reduce the number of articles and maybe make this a more efficient meeting, I'm going to propose that we take off Article 21.
And I, and I'll agree with that, but the only condition is that there has to be, from, from my point of view, I would like to see a commitment that for certain this goes on the next warrant. That is not something that gets buried and, and, you know, gets lost as we've seen other things happen.
Legally, that you can't commit to as any article you're not going to consider now. You can, in good faith, know you're going to address it, but legally, you can't say this article. So.
All right, Francine, you've got to remember, from a caveat point of view, you could get a group of people with signatures and get it on there as kind of a voter's article, and we can't do anything as a board, so I think you're protected.
Okay.
So do you need a motion to take that off, or?
Well, yeah, but are there other things there?
Well, yeah, no.
That could be delayed?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm not proposing that that's the only thing we consider taking off. I guess that's my point. I didn't know if we had to do them one by one by one, though.
Okay, at this point, would it be okay if we turned to Ed? Because I think you had us, you were going to speak in general, or you were going to make a recommendation, perhaps in terms of the highway truck, whatever else you have in mind, Ed?
Well, the highway truck that came to mind, and I was, shall we say, very myopic in my thinking at the last meeting, and having gone through the East Street Bridge one, I remember that if the vote occurs at the town meeting first, it has to be on an election ballot within 90 days. So in, in my mind, I was thinking, well, if we put that one off and we take it up in, whether it's October, November, December, or January, we're not going to have an election within 90 days of that. So in my mind, it was like, well, if we're going to do one of these trucks, and this was Randall's first preference, it needed to go on this warrant to also be followed up within the 90 days with the election. However, the piece that I forgot going through all that, if the select board is willing to do this, is it doesn't have to be voted on at a town, town meeting first. It can be voted at a town meeting first, it can be voted on the election ballot first. If it's voted on the election ballot first and passes, there's really no definitive timeline of when it has to be voted on at a town meeting, much like the East Street Bridge was. You know, however, the only caveat out of bond counsel was, you know, not to delay it overly long, you know, like a year or two, till it does go on a warrant, be considered a town meeting for a vote. Just so people don't forget if it passed at the, on the election ballot of why they voted for it at the election ballot. So, you know, that being said, I might say that, okay, we have that wording to do under any other business to actually put it on the election ballot. Select board maybe want to consider doing that and removing. Select Board may want to consider doing that and removing the funding for the one-ton highway plow dump truck, which is a debt exclusion from this warrant, and put it, and consider putting it on a future warrant.
I believe you also said we wouldn't get it in time for winter anyways, if it passed.
Well, yeah, I mean, the last, the last time Randall ordered one of these, and it was in normal times, it took six months then. So my, my thought process is that it's probably going to take longer than six months now because of some of the availability for parts and what have you due to the COVID-19 outbreak. So, I mean, even if it was a minimum of six months, we're not going to have it back until, you know, probably March, you know, in an ideal timeframe, or maybe April. So, you know, it would be after winter.
So that's two articles.
And what about the urgency of Article 20? On the restoration of the Clark Chapman House, the repairs?
From what I remember, it was, there's a couple, two stairs going up now, and this would be helpful to have a ramp in place. But I, I didn't get the sense that it was critical right now, but again, I don't.
That's the church, that's the, that's the pantry.
Yeah. No, you're, yeah, we're talking about the Clark Chapman House. The other was the ramp for the pantry at the Congregational Church.
Sorry, I got thrown one.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Clark Chapman House needs those repairs, and if it go, you know.
Yeah, but I mean, this is something that can't wait a couple of months.
Well, it would go, it would go into the winter.
Interior repairs, correct? Sorry, Francine.
What's that?
These are interior repairs?
No, they're not. Can you let Tammy speak, Ed?
Well, can I also hear from Chris Paul? She's the liaison to Community Preservation Committee also.
Tammy Walunis, 298 College Highway, the Southampton Historical Society president. And this is a restoration of the Clark Chapman's roof to the main house that is completely rusted, and we're going to lose all our artifacts that are in that building. The second part was for the foundation, and that is because the foundation under the barn has completely deteriorated, and the whole side of the barn is falling off. It has bowed out completely. There are holes that we can push cinder blocks through. There's no foundation. We need to restore this. And if I can get this on this ballot now, they can start September 1st. The roof would be done first, and then the foundation second. But if we push it off to October, they said, they're not going to be able to start, they're not going to be able to dig the foundation.
Okay, all right. So, did you want to add anything to that?
I don't know why they couldn't dig the foundation. The ground is not frozen in October, Tammy. I mean, you know, it's, you know, you're talking, you know, six weeks or two months. But I'm, you know, I'm on both sides of this one. I'd rather not say much. I, it's not my, out of my highest priorities, I see the Concom ones as a safety issue, and the church one as a more safety issue, where people and the volume of people in and out of there, whereas right now Clark Chapman has been closed, and it's not being used right now. It is in, in dire, dire need of repair, no doubt about it. I mean, absolutely.
Yes, my concern would be if it's a roof issue, and you let it go another winter, you get damage.
You can't go another winter, you can't.
Right, so to me, that's critical to get done.
But if, if, again, we had an assurance of, of a town meeting in October, and it was on the warrant in October, roofing happens, I mean, I had my roof done in November last year on my garage. So, I mean, it's, it's not impossible if the people are available to do it, but.
We're, we're throwing October around, but that's just somebody threw it out. I, I wouldn't put my finger on October.
The nice thing about if we can do this in October is the fact that the weather should be nice enough that we can still have an outdoor meeting, rather than having to meet indoors, and especially if COVID-19 picks up more.
Could I ask about Article 16, report of the Committee Preservation Committee? So is that moving the money in the percentages into the various accounts? Or is that an updating of the, the last year, which is required to have a public hearing on?
No, the, the, this one, it actually accomplishes three things. It gives them the authorization to expend their administrative expenses for $7,500. It puts the funding into the three accounts. Plus, this one, it also accounts for the first-year payment on the debt for Clearwater Woodlands. Or never.
No, somewhere, somewhere.
I knew I was going to mess that up.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that one needs to probably stay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I wonder, the Chief Hillingler is not out, but I wonder about the Police Department cruiser, if that could be delayed a couple of months, considering there's one he's still waiting for. He'll have two new ones.
So I, so I can speak to that. They, it can't be delayed. All, all of their vehicles are really deteriorating, John. Like, we heard from him at our Capital Improvement Committee with, meeting with regard to this. I thought we had heard from him at the Select Board meeting, too.
Yeah.
Most of their vehicles are all over 100. They won't have two new vehicles. They only have the one that's coming in. This is the second one.
Well, that's not true, though. He's got one that he got last year. He said he had 30,000 miles on it. This will be a second brand-new one. And this other one, if we approve it, will be a third, because the second one he's waiting for is from the insurance, I believe?
Yes, it is. That's correct.
So he'll have two with 30,000 or zero miles. So that's why I was questioning whether he could wait a couple of months to get a third one, which would, but I would refer his answer to that.
I just want to remind everybody that we already have a lot of articles for the fall meeting. You know?
And those aren't even counting the bylaws ones that we hope to have revisited, too.
Well, I, I think we're going to have to revisit, you know, a lot of them.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I, I agree.
More on this list than we have on October right now. So what other, what other articles would you want to talk about?
I love the accessibility rant for the church.
Honestly, I, I mean, it, it functions as a town program, more or less, in the name of the town. And I think not having it accessible to people who either use walkers or wheelchairs is, is discriminatory, and I think that, that ramp needs to be done.
Tammy Walunis, 298 College Highway, I would rather have the Clark Chapman one taken off and the church one put on. I would be willing to say, take mine off, but keep the church one on.
Yeah, to me, that's.
We're taking off articles that are going to go really fast regardless.
Yeah.
I don't think so. I think, I don't think you can assume that. There are people, believe it or not, that were very uncomfortable with using tax dollars to fund the church. So I know it's a community site. I know that the church is as much as a community site as it is a religious site. But there are people in this town that were not happy that we paid money, tax dollars, to fix. I think the last time it was like the stairs, or there was something. So I, I, I can't.
The church should fix itself?
Yeah. I mean, yeah. Yeah, I mean, they don't pay taxes. I'm just saying, I'm just saying that I can't, I would not assume if I were you that these articles are controversy-free.
It just seems like that ramp is helping so many people get food, and that there's, I mean, it is the community cupboard. I, I don't know. It's not like we're fixing the main ramp to the, to the church.
You might also say, and I'm being devil's advocate.
I know.
You will also say that, well, why are they even going out right now? Why should anybody go out right now? Like, I mean, why don't they deliver food to people that need it? You know, like that sort of thing. Like, maybe they, maybe it's not needed right this minute. Maybe if it is delayed, they haven't had it up till now. I mean, I agree with Francine. I think it's a, I think it's a civil rights issue in terms of disability. But the question is, is it needed right now? I think is the question.
Or can it be delayed a couple of months?
The problem is, is that now our arguments for delay a few months mean that's, that's not exactly true. You know? For me, at least.
I think I'd go back to, I appreciate Tammy's, Tammy's offer. I think, again, if we tried to apply what Rini was mentioning last meeting about safety issues, then I think the ramp, in my mind, comes over the Clark Chapman, for, from a safety point of view.
Yeah, I agree.
Not, not trying to downplay Clark Chapman at all. I'm, I'm part of that, too. It has to get done, and that's why I want to get a commitment that we, you know, we'll get these back on, on some warrant at our next meeting if we take them off. I, I don't think, I don't think the CPC one should be the sacrificial lambs of, of the town meeting. But to the extent if we had to compare safety issues, I think I would put the ramp over Clark Chapman.
But, but when, when you think of it, you know, think of it as your own house. If you've got a leaky roof that's going to cause a lot of damage, and you have two steps that you'd like to put a ramp into, what are you going to take care of first? You're going to take care of the leaky roof because the ramp isn't going to matter. I know it's two different buildings. And again, somebody said these things go quick, so I, I don't think there's going to be much issue with, with these two. But I, I wouldn't take the ramp over the roof personally if we had to vote that way, but I think we should leave them both on there.
I do, too.
Yeah. Again, I don't think it, you know, it doesn't fit my test, the, the Clark Chapman House. I don't think it's a matter of public safety. I don't think it's a matter of not stopping government.
Who, who officially owns the Clark Chapman House?
The Southampton Historical.
Not the Southampton, correct?
No.
Okay, so we're not neglecting town property?
No.
No.
It's a difference between the Historical Society and the Historical Commission.
Right.
The intention here, like with the pickleball court, is not to eliminate it altogether. It's just to proponent, for the, in the interest of moving this meeting along. That's all that it is.
Yeah.
Yes, that's true, Francine, but just to, just to make you aware, I mean, there is already a lot that we have pushed off to that October meeting. So I, I, I want to just reiterate what Robert has already indicated. Like, saying that we're going to do that in October, who knows? We've, we've pushed off at least a dozen, if not more, articles till then.
Yeah, well. And we'll probably be looking at another budget then, too, for this.
Exactly. So like, you know, I don't think we should be banking on that whatever we stop doing now that we're going to do later. At least I'm not.
So, Rini, do we want to take a vote on one of these, or two of these, or keep both, or?
Yeah, I was thinking, why don't we just look at one through five? These are all housekeeping. It's basically transferring of money, unpaid bills, well, the annual operating budget.
Make any amendments to the operating budget?
Oh, yes, we have to handle that.
What's that?
Go ahead. Yes, go ahead, Ed. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, with Article 2, the annual operating budget's within there. You know, Vicky sent us a, an email, you know, identifying that, you know, some monies that we totally wiped out have already been spent. We should address, you know, those at least. She's not exactly sure of what the effect of shutting the streetlights off may have on our Cow Power agreement, since that's one of the accounts. And then, you know, I had sent out, you know, the email that, and added on to it that, you know, when the Select Board without, because of the fact of not having any input from the Board of Health, put the funding back into the health agent position, they basically wiped out the expense account. So to tack on to what Vicky had sent us, I also asked that, you know, if at a minimum, would the Select Board, you know, consider perhaps taking $500 from the Sharps program and putting it into the Board of Health expenses account? So at least they have something to operate on. And let's see, I've got Vicky's email here. Hi, so in reviewing the budget, I noticed that there are some lines which were eliminated for the fiscal year '21 budget that have already been spent, which will need to be covered in this budget. The Assistant Town Clerk and the Administrative Assessor already were paid for the first two payrolls. I would suggest taking the amount from the Building Inspector salary line. We budgeted the entire $53,000 for the new hire, while we have spent $1,060 for the current temporary inspector. Also anticipate more for the next few months. The new hire will not start until August 1st. Then I think it was actually another $1,340. I saw that warrant go across my desk today, which will, would take the temporary Building Inspector right through the end of the month. We can appropriate money to cover the Assistant Town Clerk, $205.73, and $300 for the Assessor Administrative Assistant, respectively, by taking it out of the Building Inspector's salary. That would leave $1,513.17 remaining to apply to another line item. You might want to put the amounts that were reduced from the telephone, gas, and electric in Town Hall Building accounts. Let's hope we don't have others in the future like this. We also need to cut the COA Director's wage back to the level funded amount from fiscal year '20, which would reduce from, would reduce by $230.52. This can be appropriated to another account. And that one, Vicky had brought up at another meeting, that we had transferred $230.52. I think it was, in fact, I know it was in our second set of end-of-reserve transfers into that account. But that was because of the fact that for fiscal year '20, that account was budgeted at 50, yeah, 52.2 weeks, and it should have been budgeted at 52.5 weeks. So that was the $230.52. We're back in '20 to '21 of the 52.2 weeks. And then lastly, I already sent an email to the contact for Cow Power to determine how the cutting of the streetlights affects our agreement. Waiting to hear back. My assumption is that the credits will be applied to another account, but so will the expense of those credits. Just food for thought.
Okay, can I, can I just mention on the COA? We, I agree that taking it out of the COA Director and leaving that level funding makes sense. But then it needs to be put back. I thought what we did do is we then took it out of the expense line. You need to put it back into the expenses. It was, the expenses were reduced to like 900 and something, if you add that back in.
But that wasn't taken from the COA Director's salary account to do that.
Well, where did the money come from that was moved into it? Because it wasn't level funded.
What's that?
It wasn't level funded. I agree there. It wasn't.
Right. The, you know, I should have $230.52 would level fund that.
Right. So are you saying, Francine, that that difference should be put into expenses? Yes. I mean, we had a balanced budget the last time we talked, and just move the money back into that category.
Want me to bring it up?
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
Yeah. I, I thought that was reduction, reduction was done as basically a percentage that. that the board was looking at from certain departments.
So do you want me to bring it up?
Yeah, Janet Kane would like to get into the meeting if, um, you could unmute her, Chair of the Council on Aging. You'll have to have video, Janet. There you go.
Yep.
Nope, I don't see your video.
There it is. It's coming. Very dark.
Bright light. There's Janet Kane, 80 through Glendale Road. There's, let me just turn the, let me turn the TV off because I'm listening to myself. So Chair of the Council on Aging Board, yeah, the original budget that you displayed had Joan level funded. They took the $232 out of her salary. It was in Matt's spreadsheet as a reduction. And then when you combined the wages and took them both out of expenses, you had the reduction of the, um, admin wage line and Joan's reduction and you bundled them and put them into expenses. So if you bring her back to level funding, then you have to make sure you move that out of expenses.
I thought we just moved over like the, uh.
Guys, I can show the spreadsheet, but we, when we restored all the admins, that amount, the amount that we needed to take from COA was put into expenses. So, so the, I'm sorry, let me just, can we just confirm that?
For both?
Yeah. The, the amount was removed from expenses. So the admin was not, I'm sorry, the wage line was not touched. I can bring it up if you want. I can show you.
Yeah, you had two separate dollars amount and you combined them and put it into the expenses. The one to, from Joan's or from the COA Director's line and, and the admin wage line and you combined them into expenses. So it's okay to make.
No, just correction on that. It was the admin line and the expense line because we didn't touch the Director line.
You did touch the Director line.
Well, I'm looking at it right now.
No, I didn't, there was no reduction in expenses.
We didn't touch, we didn't touch any Director lines aside from Ed, who volunteered to do it.
No, but initially I think Vicky requested, or put in, recommended that Joan would be put back to a, um, you know, her original budget from last year.
That would, that would be the amount that's $230.52 less, so it's there.
Right. Because that's not showing that now, right?
Right.
Right. Because it's showing, because what I did is when I put that number in there, I thought it was contractual because we had to transfer money in at the end of the year. I thought it was short, but it was short because it was a 52.5, 52.5 instead of a 52.2, uh, payroll here.
I didn't think there was any reduction in expenses that they, that at the last meeting you combined, I'll have to go back and watch the video, combined both those wage lines and moved it into expenses. I can go back and review it. Happy to do that.
Somehow we had the balanced budget with.
For though, I mean, we have the, we have the final budget. Are we just trying to split the money, the total that COA has to contribute up across different lines? Is that what we're trying to do?
That's what it's, yes. The 232 should come out of the wage line instead of the expense line.
And like Vicky said, there's $230.52 that will be left from that that can be put somewhere else.
The COA right now is $650.90 that it's deducting from the expense line. That's all that COA is, is, uh.
But it started as wages and got moved to the expense line at the end of that meeting. Yes.
Yeah. And you want it back in wages?
No, I want the 232 so that the Director's position is same as last year.
Level funded.
Level funded, thank you.
Which just so that we're all clear here, the, the Directors.
That was what my understanding was from the last meeting.
You want me to just share this?
Yes, please.
Put it up.
Yeah. Just so that we can talk about what it is that we're looking at.
So what you're saying, Janet, is that the 230 that would take from the Director's wages would go back down into the COA expenses?
No, I'm saying that, that expenses, the 230 should go back up to, to make, um, Joan, here, let's go back, yeah. So that 232 should be reduced from the wage line, the Director's wage line.
What is 232?
Should be the number.
You want this number here?
Yes.
Yes.
That's your level funded, right?
That's the level funded, right.
And how much does that equal?
Could be $230, $230 and.
52 cents.
That's.
And that number was in it last week, but I believe was added.
Yeah, $230.52 should be.
Okay.
But I, I believe that should come out of the 650 because I thought it was added together with the two salaries and moved down to expenses similar to the Highway Department admin and.
What can I just, all right, let me just, uh, let me just verify that real quick.
Sure. I don't know if you have a previous.
I do, but, um.
And if my memory is inaccurate, I'm happy to, uh, agree to that. But that's what I recollect anyway. Before you combine wages into expenses, I thought that's what the number was.
Yeah, just hold on. I'm just going to do it in front of you. Hold on. Okay. Um, so then if we're working off of this, then what we, then I'm just going to do, where am I? Where, where should I do this here? I'll just do the math right here. So I'm pulling those numbers. That's the sum and summing them.
Okay.
All right. And then just so that people know what this is, 650. Let me just think, I got to think about this.
If you're putting this, if you want to put the same amount back into the Council on Aging's expenses, that.
No, I, I remember this now. I, I, I remember, I remember the Council, the Council on Aging section, like the, the departments that we considered, um, to get grouped into. So the, the, the 650 was, was a quarter, was a quarter cut on the admin based on what the admin was making at that time. And that was provided by Jen Day.
Was that?
So it had nothing to do with the summation. Uh, if it had, it just frankly speaking, if it had to do with the summation, we'd have to go with 4% of the sum. So, you know, it, it, it didn't be, like if we did 4% of the sum, because that's where the other town departments are, of the sum of expenses and wages. And then we're doing equals this times .04. That's how much you'd have to get cut. Instead, the 65090 was equivalent to the cuts to the admins when we were originally cutting the admins.
But Matt, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I, I didn't think anybody was taking any Director's position into effect when they looked at that percentage.
Yeah, they were. It was all wage and, it was all wage and, um, um, expense lines that were pulled into it.
Admin wages, but not Director wages.
Not Director wages. We weren't doing heads of department wages.
You weren't doing heads of, so if you look at the 35, you're including the Director.
No, no. When we were, when we were, when we were equitably distributing the cuts to the departments, we were considering all wage lines and expense lines.
No. I, I asked that question about the Board of Health and I was told no.
And the assessors wasn't hit that way? None of them were hit that way?
I don't think that's true, guys.
It was only the admin wages that were reduced by 25%.
And the confusion here was that part of those wages are paid by the grant, right?
Well, no, those wages that are listed there are all town wages.
Those are town ones, okay.
Jen's, Jen's calculation looked at her salary or her, her payroll and that included partially, you know, three hours a week.
Okay.
Of, um, grant monies, yeah.
Got it, yeah.
But this 5,500 only includes the, uh, but I do not believe you took any Directors or Department Heads into consideration.
I'm just checking.
You know, Matt, you've been doing this for a long time, so.
No, I was bad, I was fair across all of the depart, we, we were doing this, we, we were fair across all of the departments. So it was, it was.
On the admins, I watched. I mean, if you look at the, the town accountant's salary, no reduction. If you look at, um, town administrator's salary, there's a, I don't know why there's a reduction there. I guess because she's not contracted. Assessor's salary, no reduction. No, Town Clerk, I'm sorry, Town Clerk's salary, no reduction. So I'm not sure why the Department Head and the Council on Aging, who gets paid the lowest hourly rate in the town of Department Heads, would have a reduction. Other than she needs to be level funded.
Well, I think you're mixing two different things there.
I mean.
There's, while they didn't touch those salaries, were the salaries in the calculations when the further reductions were to get to that percentage, were they calculated there?
Look, look, here's what, here's, here's, just to, I'm, I'm looking at this right now. The, the, the departments that were included in, in a, in a, in a equitable percentage cut were general government, police dispatch, fire EMT, highway, Board of Health and library. COA, the only cuts that were made there were to the, were to the admin. It was not, it was not, it was not included with those others. It's such a small department compared to the others.
Right.
So, so, so those cuts, so like the 4% that we got to that was equitable across the departments, it did include all wages and expenses and the four, and, and, you know, there was a minor range between them, but they arrived in the 4% neighborhood. If you're advocating for that, the cuts are going to be deeper. Otherwise, the 650 cut was just purely based on what was originally a cut to the admin, which was a quarter of the time, which was equitable with the other departments admins.
So if I take 25% off of 55, 65.
No, I don't think that was the math. I don't, I'm going to look for that file now, but that was based on what Jen Day gave us on what that person made.
But it's paid by the grant. You can't go by, you can't reduce her grant funding.
Um, look, I, I, I'll try to go back to a much further sheet just to give you the number that it was based off of. I was fed the number. I wasn't, I wasn't, um, I didn't, I, you know, I didn't make the number up. So the number, ah, let's see.
I mean, I guess.
Per gen, here we go. Council on Per Gen Day, the admin makes $3,363,000, or 3,3,600, sorry. $3,363 per year.
3,000?
3,363.
Really?
Well, that's probably out of the operating budget.
That's out of the operating budget, right.
And the rest comes from the grant.
The rest would come from the grant.
So the, so the, um, were, were there cuts from that line out of the operating budget? I don't think there should have been, right?
No, so what do you mean?
Well, if it was, you know, cut in any way, it should have been restored by the final, um, budget, correct?
Yes. So, yes, so what, and I'm looking at a previous, I'm looking at a previous sheet here. So, so, so let me just see here.
I'm looking at the one on the ninth, Matt. And on the, the Council on Aging expenses, it's 1650.
Right.
Uh, it doesn't, and there's a zero in that other column. It doesn't look like we took anything from.
Yep, we didn't. Yeah, I'm looking at the same one now.
Okay.
Yep, we didn't. So, yep, so, yep, this is a, this is a good catch, I think. So basically, the, is what you're saying, Janet? The cut should be 42038?
I came up with 412. So I, I, but you, you're the mathematician of me, so.
Well, by the.
But Jones, so Jones, whatever 25% is of Darlene's 55, 65, right? Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, it depends on what the basis number is. I mean, per gen, the admin made $3,363 per year on the operating budget, which that, the math on that, a quarter of that, a quarter of that times 50% because of the unemployment is 42038. And we had, we had that on a previous version that we did.
Okay.
That we came out of a meeting on.
But she's, okay.
So then technically speaking, which technically then, based on that, the, the cut to that department should be 42038.
And then Joan should be level funded.
And Joan should be level funded, which is another, which is somehow, and I guess, Ed, I wasn't, you know, I was trying to figure out some of this was, I don't know why we didn't level fund that. Did you explain that previously?
Yeah. I, I think it's one that got by me. Vicky had mentioned it in a previous meeting that when I had put that extra $230.52 in because we had to transfer it in there. So I just assumed that the calculation was off. But the calculation was off because it was a year that had 52.5.
Okay, so you thought it was a contractual increase?
Right, exactly. And I thought we just calculated the salary, uh, incorrectly for.
Okay.
Year, that's all. So that was, that was my mistake.
So then, so then this should get carried over to here for equity.
Right.
This should get dropped to 420.38.
But then where do you add the, the 23052 back in?
No, you don't have to. Once you take it out, you're fine. I mean, as long as you took it out of both places, that's, that, that, that looks good to me.
Yeah. It's still balanced.
Yeah.
Because you took it out of the salary line.
Yeah. Yeah. So the, the equation's still balanced. It's, you can see right here that we're still.
Okay.
We're still, we're still balanced. So what we removed is what we also added.
And thank you for taking, I know we're just a little department. We have to.
No, it's all good. I mean, the math, the, I appreciate you catching, catching that. I mean, I, I don't, I didn't, I, you know, I guess we, we did treat this as a contractual increase. But if it's not, then it, then it should come out of here, which is what we did.
Okay.
And I'm glad that the 42038 is reflective on a previous sheet that we already did. out of the nine, I think it was the ninth meeting.
Yeah, I think so.
So, Matt, so can you just review then? I mean, when we first started this exercise, we pretty much did level funds, level funded plus contractual increases. Then I think at one point, we also talked about 25 reduction in admin assistant expenses. They were added back in.
Yep.
Could you just explain then what was the, then there was a percentage that was taken from wage and expense? I think it was 1% and 3%, 3% from expenses, 1% for wage line. Is that true or no?
No, like, look, there, there were changes that occurred at the last select board meeting and I'm, I'm sorry to say this, but like, you know, the, the wrench that got thrown in this was the, was the math that we did when, when, when we decided to restore the admins and then we started, honestly, we really started moving numbers around without.
In the end.
Like after we decided to move the admin money and then kind of, you know, how do I say this? I mean.
Keep them whole.
Well, we kept them whole and then we just started kind of figuring out what other line items we could get that difference from.
I guess what I'm getting, what I'm getting to is.
That math was like done on the fly at the board meeting. And so like, honestly, this, this, this is a clerical error that was done on the fly during our last select board meeting that Janet caught. Like this, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to like defuse myself from this, but like this, all of this was in, was, was out of this wage line initially. And, you know, it was per the math of Jen Day, but when we changed this all on the fly, it was on the fly. I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah, no, that's okay. What I'm, what I'm getting to is I'm trying to get back to Ed's comment about the board of health. So what I was just wondering is, he was saying that their expense line got cut so much that in order to restore some money, how about reducing the Sharps program? So I just wanted to get a sense that our basic budget, you know, is like, you know, like level funded with the exception of contractual increases and then the expense line, but each department was asked to, to totally cut their like line by something in that, three and a half to 4%, right?
Yeah, by, by 4% base.
Yeah, okay.
Around that number, by 4%. But just to reiterate, the departments did not, you know, it was the larger sized departments.
Not all of them.
Not all of them. I'd have to do veterans, I'd have to do council on agent.
Right, 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 right.
We, we, we just, I mean, it's an inconsistent, like, I hate to say this, but it's like, we're, then we're starting to talk about hundreds of dollars and it just doesn't move the needle and it, you know, so we, the larger departments, it was general government, police, police dispatch, fire EMT, highway and border health and library were the, were the ones that we applied the 4% to.
Right. And if I recall, border health didn't get back to us with how they wanted to allocate the 2988, right?
Which is why, which is why when we restored, and sorry to cut you off, but which is why when we restored the admins, we had to move that down here.
Right, but what Ed is saying now is maybe some of that could go toward the, or with the Sharps program now that they're down. If they, if they put all that there, taking away from the expenses, they're down to $11 to operate on.
Yeah, so when you guys, I'm totally, totally fine. I mean.
But I, you know, I guess my question is, we still haven't heard from the board of health.
No, they haven't met.
Right, they haven't met. And also Jerry was on vacation, so in fairness to her, she did not have the time to actually get together, do that. But I think that if, Ed, you think, I mean, the Sharps program is very popular. If I remember correctly, it actually, the, the interim town meeting, the town voted to increase the amount of money into that line. So I, I guess, you know, we didn't hear any feedback about that. So I think, you know, we could always readjust it, but it seems logical to, you know, it's going to be very difficult without expenses at all. So maybe moving $500 into that expense line and reducing the Sharps and then maybe there's additional grant funding or something for the Sharps program, but it seems logical to not leave them with $11.16 in the expense line.
Yeah, I would agree.
It's, it's unrealistic, you know, hopefully somewhere along the way between now and, you know, November that, you know, the actual budget picture, state revenues actually gets better rather than worse than what we anticipated and maybe able to put some money back in it at that point in time. And you know what? And I'm just going to use the collective we here, even though I'm not a select board member, is in this particular case, we're between a rock and a hard place because it's got, this department has so few line items that, you know, whether you go back and say, well, yeah, they're not going to be able to operate on $11.16 in expenses, whether you go back and say, oh, well, let's take for, you know, further reduction from the health agent, the health director or the Sharps program, it's a no win scenario. So I, I, I mean, for me and, you know, I'm e- even $511.16 isn't a lot, but it might get them through, you know, three or four months until either, you know, grants come forward or we have a better, you know, budget picture. But at, at least it gives them something to actually operate on.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any suggestions to the, the operating budget?
The only other two are, we do have to put that $205.73 back into the assistant town clerk position and the $300 into the assessor admin assistant position because of the fact that we've already spent done that expense.
Okay, so do you want me to make these changes too?
Yeah, we're going to have to.
Let's see where we end up. Yeah.
Yeah, we spent that.
Okay, so what am I doing? Where am I going first?
Administrative assistant wages for assisting clerk and also assessor, the positions that are vacant. They had, they already received money in this fiscal year. So we have to replace. And can you give us a dollar amount, starting with the assessor? So if that's where you are?
Yeah.
$300 we need in that account. So that would be a $300 less reduction. So that should be $9,900. Yeah.
Okay, what else?
And then the other one is the assistant town clerk position.
What do we need in it?
We need $205.73.
Hold on. How much?
$205.73.
$205.73.
That do it?
That'll do it.
Okay, so then let's just see where we're. Let's just pull that from legal because that's where we were, that's where we were bumping everything in to balance this.
Vicky was, Vicky was recommending the building commissioner.
Right.
Because he's not starting till August.
Perfect, okay.
Taking that amount out of the building inspectors because they, they're not starting till August 1st.
Yeah, and what, what she was saying is that if I've done the math right from her email is that actually you could reduce the building inspector's salary by $2,018.90.
2,000 what?
And if you did that, it would give us in addition to those two adjustments to those administrative individuals or positions, another $1,513.17.
Yep.
That would be remaining to apply to another line item.
Like legal.
She was, well, she was actually suggesting either the telephone, the town hall gas or electric or the town hall building accounts.
We were just talking about the board of health only having $500. Could we take some of that, put it to board of health to give the expense a little more?
Well, we also overspent on those other lines that, I mean, Dick recommended those other lines for.
Yeah, I know. That, that wouldn't be fair either to the, to the other departments. The, the general government department is the one that's borne the largest percentage decrease.
And my suggestion, since we've overspent the account just because of the required building maintenance, I'd, I'd suggest putting it, that entire $1,513.17 and adding it back into the town hall building expense account.
Okay, where is it? Well, town hall building expenses, we remove 200 from level fund. So there's gas, there's all these lines right here. Can you see this, Ed, or not?
Yeah, I can see it. Okay.
Just, just again, I mean, the board of health with the COVID-19 has no expenses. How are they going to operate, especially if we go back to two from the three where we are now? They're going to need some money for supplies. It's, I think it's, they have some money in their expenses to operate with.
Well, they just got $500 that they didn't have before, so.
And the, and the other, no, and the other question that I've asked, I know we got, we got the money and then for the, the $9,000 and we submitted a plan for the immunization program. Is there any way to go back and revise the intended use of that money so that we might access some of that $9,000 for their COVID, if you're talking about, you know, COVID related expenses, that's where they would go.
Right, and that, and that's something that the board of health will have to take up and look at.
As long as they have an area to go to.
$9,000 at the reserve for future and I certainly recommend that they go back. We also got a massive shipment of PPE. So I think that for a while, I think they're okay. The board of health would have to go back and vote, do something different with that money. It's already been submitted, the, the budget's already been submitted to DPH.
Right. Yes. And I do have another question, though. If the building inspector is not going to start for a month, the average monthly salary is about $4,400. Did we redistribute that $4,400 when you add all these little pieces up?
Well, don't forget you're paying a temporary building commission.
I understand that. And, and what Vicky said is we've already paid him like $1,060. So for a month, if we get up to $2,000, we still have $2,400 there.
Well, like I say, I just saw the warrant come across my desk because I have to sign now as that department head for another $1,340.
It's a variable thing. I think we're close on this. I'm conservative, which is what we should be.
I think we kind of looked at the council of aging. We looked at putting Vicky's recommendations to, to put the money that was already spent back in there and she even made a recommendation about where to put the money back to. I think at this point, we give a little bit of expenses back to the board of health. Hopefully there'll be grant funds or other monies available to assist with supplies for them. Is there any other, are there any other recommendations to the FY '21 budget right now?
Building exp, I mean, you know, like we got $1,500 that we've got to put back. My, my thing is, is we really should be putting this back into general government. That was where we were really pulling funds for these admins that we really shouldn't have been pulling.
Well, I think she mentioned gas and electric, which took a $3,000 cut. What else did she recommend?
No, gas and electric took, took 800, depending on what reference number you're using.
Gas and electric, I have 27,162 and it's landing at 24,362.
However, the request.
Because of the, the solar credits and the cow power was 2,000.
Oh, okay, yes, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, like I say, if it was me, because it's, was it, it was over expended before I got here and it's been over expended every year because what we've got in there barely covers our contractual amounts, whether it's with BG Mechanical for the HVAC system, whether it's base state elevator for the elevator, whether it's for Johnson Controls for our fire suppression system or whatever. I just, I would plug it back into the town hall building expenses. It's the most volatile account of those three.
All right, let's put it in there then.
I, I agree.
So.
The 1513 or whatever.
Yeah, 151317.
And add it to the, okay, hold on.
Town hall building expenses instead of taking away 200.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'll zero it out and then, but no, I'm not going to zero it out. I, I gotta add 151317 to the 21,787.
Right.
Right.
And then we'll be balanced again.
So I'm going to leave that uncut, uncut, and then what am I going to do? I'm just going to manually change this? Because that in no way, just to be clear, like, I can't remember all this stuff, guys. So like, because, you know, especially when we're changing stuff on the fly, like this column, generally speaking, is reflective of this column minus this column is this column. But just so that you know, this column D is generally a map over of column B with the exception of contract increases. At this point, this number is like completely manual. There's no formula attached to it. Whereas all of these other ones you can see up here are all formulaic.
Right.
So it's, it's manual, but it is what it, you know.
Yep.
And it balances now, again.
Maybe just put a note somewhere if you want, Matt, just say where that 15 came from, but.
Okay, I'll just put, yeah.
Yeah, instead of relying on the collective memory.
Really?
I'll just say what, per Vicky, additional money allocated to this line.
For building commissioner.
Based on delayed start to building inspector.
Good enough.
Is that cool?
Yep.
Speaking of which, he'll be starting on Monday.
That's correct.
Do we balance now?
Yeah, so if I go down here.
Okay, are there any other edits, questions, comments on the budget?
No, just a thank you to Janet for checking math.
Yep. Thanks, Janet.
Well, that'll take care of that article two.
Yeah, really?
Any other comments on the budget?
No.
Then let's just switch right back to the articles then.
Ed, I'll be sending this to you right now.
Okay, so let's go back to what we were talking about before. Let's talk about article 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Article 1 is unpaid bills. We heard about switching those over. We, article 2 is the budget. Article 3 is the transfer station enterprise fiscal budget. Article 4 is the water enterprise fiscal budget and article 5 is transfer for PEG access for town hall. So money in, money out. Is there anybody that has any concerns about any of those in terms of whether they should stay on the warrant, whether or not? Do you have any questions about the content?
Can we bundle them all?
3 and 4 have to stay on. The only question would be with article 5 is can we live for a few more months without that equipment being changed?
No.
No, I, I.
Absolutely not.
It's money designated for that purpose that comes from charter. It needs to go there. I don't know that that's a complicated issue.
Well, except it's a, another article which makes the meeting longer and is it critical to government function at this point? Or can it wait two or three months?
If you listen to people and the, and the, you know, the quality of the transmissions, I think, I think it's, I wouldn't want to see it the way.
Plus you're going to have the lead time to order all the equipment anyway, even if we're not physically back at town hall. By the time you get the equipment ordered in, in place.
I asked a question.
Yep.
Yep. I, I don't personally think that it's required. I think we're going to be on Zoom for a while.
I agree.
Yep.
If we go back to your criteria, really, is it critical, is it budget for the, you know?
Okay. All right, how do you want to prove these? Obviously, we're not going to prove the entire warrant as one. I think there's some different disagreements or just, you know, differences of opinion around what should be there or not. Do you want to go line, you know, article by article?
Sure. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, is there, I mean, are people in mutual agreement for articles 1, 2, 3 and 4?
Yes.
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 Okay, then how about a motion for that?
Articles 1 through 4.
Matt, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any further questions or discussion? Follows in favor?
Just behind.
Follows on.
Roll in there.
Art 9.
And Grove 9. So we're good with 1, 2, 3, 4? So we're good with 1, 2, 3, 4, Article 5. What else would you like to talk about with Article 5?
Just for the sake, but I'll make a motion. We delay that to the next meeting.
Ed, are you writing all of the, are you writing the delays down with regard to the ones that we're eliminating now? Because I have the ones from the delayed capital committee.
Yeah, I'm writing these down.
Just want to make sure that these things don't get lost, you know? Because some, like, the capital committee ones, we, the capital committee can keep track of. But, you know, I don't know about these ones that are kind of miscellaneous.
Okay, so there's a motion to delay Article 5. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, further questions, discussion? Okay, then, all those in favor of delaying Article 5, say aye.
Martin, aye.
Falls, aye.
Falls, aye. All those against Article 5, the delay of Article 5?
Was it just Martin and Falls?
And me.
And me.
Groden. Okay, and Roland. Against Article 5?
Aye. Fishman, aye.
Okay, so Article 6, let's handle this separately. I think this was already discussed. Can I have a, a motion relative to Article 6?
So Article 5, the PEG access broadcast equipment is being removed?
It's being delayed.
Yeah.
Okay, so Article 6, is there a motion relative to Article 6?
This is the one we want to take off and put on the election ballot, right?
That's what Ed's proposing.
That's what I'm proposing.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we take it off this annual town meeting and put it on the next election for a vote.
Have you talked to Randall about this?
No, I have not.
Okay.
So would you specify that that would be on the September 1 election?
Of course, yeah.
That's the next one, yeah.
That'd be part of the motion, yeah. That's all.
Okay, we, I, I believe we have a motion.
I'm sorry, I'll amend it for the September election.
Okay. Okay, so John made a motion to delay it, but to include it in the election for September 1. Is there a second?
No second.
Okay, so John and Francine, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of delaying Article 6 and having it be elected on the election ballot, say aye.
Martin, aye.
Falls, aye.
Groden, aye.
Fishman, aye.
Roland, no.
Okay, 4 to 1. So that does carry to remove Article 6 or delay it. Now, I, so the next articles are the Norris School ones. I guess I'm just kind of wondering, last time we had a select board meeting, we had voted in favor of it being 3 and 2, and now it's showing up here as unbundled. Can someone explain how that happened? Because right now, the current vote of the select board is to have it be 3 and 2.
And actually, I was going through those notes today, and I did remember that the replacement kitchen oven and hood and fire were voted to be combined into an article. And that's referenced here under Article 9. I actually couldn't remember if, what the other ones were, and I actually asked Matt if he could remember, and he thought-
We talked about it, but we decided that it was more efficient at Robert's recommendation to leave them separate, so.
Yeah.
Reduced it by one, but with the other ones didn't, I remember the discussion, the other ones didn't make any sense to bundle because they're not related to each other.
Well, it's the same funding source, and it's for the same department. And I think the last word of the select board was that it would be 3 and 2.
However, Robert said at the beginning of this meeting that it's more efficient than not. Like, he's, he's waving his hand. I'll do whatever. It doesn't matter to me. I'm just, I just want it to be efficient.
I'm only moving my hand. I'm not waving it.
Okay.
Okay.
So I, I mean-
I'm just thinking procedurally, I believe last time we had actually voted in favor of having it be 3 and 2.
We did, we did, you did vote that way last time. Having it separate is cleaner, it's more efficient, especially when the three don't belong together under one article.
So reading to help move this along, you mind if I make a motion?
Sure.
To make a motion that we keep on Article 7, 8, and 9 as his, uh, the warrant.
Second.
Okay, so John and then Matt, for a second, any discussion, questions?
No, let, let me just clarify this, that so 7 would be funding for the elementary school PA system. 8 is funding for the gutter repair and sealing at Norris School. 9 is a combination of funding for the replacement kitchen oven and hood fire suppression system at Norris School.
Right, and you also need-
Abending, it, it's worth mentioning just what 10 is, which is the laptops, which is the critical item over there, which-
I am going to combine that in my motion, so in case people want to talk about it separately.
Okay, that's fine. So my second remains.
So your motion involves Article?
7, 8, and 9.
7, 8, and 9.
And then I, I'm just gonna ask the question again, because it was asked at the last meeting, is the replacement kitchen oven and hood fire suppression system at Norris School, the way things are looking, do we really think that they're going to utilize those? I know they have talked, talked about prepackaged food, but I, I don't think they've come to an end decision.
Yeah, I, I don't think they have either. If you go back to hybrid or all at school, you're not even providing lunches. I see the fire, fire suppression as a safety issue, too.
And, and, and I think that, you know, we're talking about not just safety, but health, and are able to, you know, make hot food for, for kids who, when they get back to school, I think it's important that they have the equipment that they need.
I mean, I also think the longer that we go here, whether it's remote or hybrid or, or total lockdown again, I mean, I feel like we're ultimately gonna need some kitchens here if we keep doing this as a society.
I, I still don't, I still think bundling them into two articles, I still support that. I'm hoping they're not going to be controversial. I think that it's all coming from the same funding source, and it's got to the same department, so I'm kind of hoping we could expedite it by having it be in, in one, in two articles instead of five. But that doesn't seem like people agree that that would be faster.
Well, or, or the other piece is, instead of thinking of combining Articles 7, 8, and 10, 10 being the feature laptops, would it make sense to at least combine Articles 7 and 8, which would be the PA system, and gutter repair and sealing at the Norris School, which, in my opinion, are basically facility improvements?
Yeah. Well, that would make sense to me.
I would go along with that idea. Yep, that would at least reduce it down to 3.
I mean, I, I'm okay with, with individual, but just a point of order. Do we want to take a vote on this so we can either go forward or, or get another motion on the 7, 8, and 9?
Right, right now, your motion includes 7, 8, and 9.
Correct.
I just wanted to raise that. I mean, I, I mean, are people in agreement with doing a couple of them together? I guess I'd like to hear from Robert. I mean, you still feeling that we're gonna, it's gonna be faster by doing them all separately?
It's 6 of one, half a dozen of the other. You, you group them together for this one, 3 and 2, 2 articles, works fine. You split them up, 1, 2, 3, and maybe combine 2, that works well. It's, we're, we're gonna do this.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I think this is the only, out of the, all the articles, this is the only one where we talked about even trying to combine. It's the only one that made sense to try and make some combination of articles, so.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I would still like to stick to our original thought of doing that.
Yeah, me too. And, 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 and people have the right or to unbundle them on the town floor, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess my purp- So right now, we have a motion for 7, 8, and 9. Do you want to amend that motion? Or do you want to remove it or keep it on the table, John?
Honestly, I'm, I'm fine with just seeing where it goes here. Because to me, I'm afraid that people are gonna, if you got too many together, like 3 together, they're gonna, they're not gonna like 1, and they're gonna cause an issue, vote against it. I mean, we had that conversation a week or two ago. I don't like Article 1. 2 and 3 I like, but I really don't like 1 of them, so I'm not voting for all of them. That's my only concern.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to believe that, you know, PA system is for safety, and the gutter repair is, I mean, all you do is look at the school and know that that's needed. And then the teaching, I mean, we're in a, we're in a electronic world right now, so I would hope that the 3 of them wouldn't be particularly controversial, and we could stick to our original plan of 3 and 2. And if anybody wants to unbundle them on the day of the meeting, they can do that.
Yeah, it's, it's, to me, I think are gonna, might be a little-
It happens quick.
What's that?
I, I, I think they go quick.
I would hope so. So, so John, you want to stick to your original motion of 7, 8, and 9? John made the motion. Was there a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Yeah.
Who did?
I did.
Yeah.
Matt, do you want to go ahead and vote on 7, 8, and 9 together, approving them together? In other words, individually, but approving them as they, as they are currently written?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Roland, aye.
Art, aye.
Falls, no.
Groden, no. So they stay, I guess they are, 7, 8, and 9. So you want to look at 10 separately, then? Or do you want to, yeah? People are in general agreement with 10?
Well, okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
I feel like, can we, can we pick up more than 1 here? I mean, what?
That's the last one there.
I mean, we could, we could, honestly, for me, I could do 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 right now.
Okay. Why don't you make a motion, then, Matt?
All right, I move to approve Article-
Whoa, 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 whoa. Okay, what are we, are we grouping them for one article, or are we voting?
Not, no, we're not. It was a 3 to 2 vote to keep them separate.
Okay, good, sorry.
Yeah, the schools, the ones that are just, yeah, they're separate.
The oven and the hood are the only ones together.
Okay, good.
Okay, so we have a motion on 10, 11, 12, and 13, 14.
Yep.
So that motion, sorry, that motion is just to bring them forward, not to group them, correct?
Not to group them, just to bring them forward, and that they're important, and to reiterate our approval to them.
I'll second that.
John, was that a second from you?
Yes, it was.
So Matt and then John, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Fishman, aye.
Falls, aye.
Roland, aye.
Art, aye.
And Groden, aye. So we're up to number Article 15. Would someone like to make a motion for any of the next ones?
Well, so is, there's, you know, there's nothing to do? Is there any revolving spending limits?
Yep.
Like, that's for the capital stabilization capital. Is that what that is?
We have to approve the limits and the revolving accounts, correct, Ed?
Yeah.
We have to, yes, yearly, we have to approve the spending limits.
I'll make a motion. We accept Article 15 and 16.
I'll second that.
Okay, John and then Francine, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Fishman, aye.
Falls, aye.
Roland, aye.
Art, aye.
Groden, aye. That brings us up to, there's 17.
Second to that one.
Francine, I believe.
Okay.
Okay, so the next one is the Congregational Church, the ramp, and then 18 is the, okay, then we get into the trails, and then historical society, and then pickleball. So right now, 17. So we're gonna handle this separately?
Yeah, I, for, I move to approve Article 17.
And I'll second it.
Okay, John and then, I'm sorry, Matt and then Francine, any questions? Discussion? All those in favor?
Fishman, aye.
Falls, aye.
Roland, aye.
Art, aye.
Groden, aye. Moving on, number 18. 18 and 19 are both, one of them is funding for the safe access to the trails because of the microburst, and the 19 is to match a grant that's been applied for, for trail maintenance.
Right, can we combine, can we combine those?
I'd like to combine 18 and 19.
I'll second that one.
Can we?
Sure. Okay, me combine them or just approve them both together, Chris? I'm sorry.
Well, they're both for Concom, but, I mean, whatever, I'm, bring them forward at least. If we want to keep them as separate articles, that's fine.
I guess my question is, is can they be combined into one article?
Are we talking about 18 and 19, or 19 and 20?
18 and 19.
18 and 19 is church and Concom. They're not the same, so they can't be combined.
No, and they're both-
Two separate accounts.
Two separate accounts.
17 was church.
No, we're talking, no, we're talking about both of them Conservation Commission, both of them trails-related. One of them is to fix the trails at Manhan, the Hazel Young Trail because of the microburst. And the other one is to match a grant that's been applied for, 20% matching grant. That the, the funding amounts are significantly different as well. One of them is, and the 200 is about $5,000, the other one's close to 17 or more. So they're very different, same source of funds, very different, same trails, but different amounts and different purposes.
Right.
So they are for different purp-, they are for different purposes?
They are for different purposes.
Yeah.
It's not to repair trails after a storm?
None of them is.
Okay.
The other one is a massive amount of work based on a grant to fix the bridge and do all kinds of improvement on the trail. But it's specifically related to a matching grant. I kind of think they should be separate.
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather keep them separate, I think, so. I, but let's bring forth 18, which is the, the safe access of the trails, and then 19, which is the 20% match.
I'll second that.
All right, Chris and then John, any discussion?
These are all related to safety issues in the woods, correct?
Correct.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I, I was checking it out, and there were kids on bicycles jumping over logs. I mean, I think it is.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Okay, all those in favor of individually, Article 18 and 19?
Roland, aye.
Falls, aye.
Art, aye.
Fishman, aye.
Okay, now we're up to Article 20. That's the Clark Chapman House, and then Article 21, which is currently 21, I should say, which is the pickleball.
Move to approve the Clark Chapman House, Article number 20.
Second.
Okay, Matt and then John, further discussion?
I don't want to see this thing have a risk of falling in on itself. That would not, we wouldn't be able to defend ourselves on that.
Okay, further, further questions or comments?
Who seconded this one?
I did.
John. Matt, motion John seconded.
I, I think, given that we've had an offer to potentially move it off, I think we ought to take that as well. I mean, Tammy offered-
Before the winter, I mean, and they have the time, that, that matters to me.
What she said, and I think she's still there, she said that she had a preference of the ramp over, yeah, over the, the roof, but I mean, if it's a roof and a crumbling foundation, and we leave that go till the winter or spring, and we get a rainy spring, that could implode out of something like that, sir.
Or a heavy, or a heavy snow, if you like to say that.
And that's right adjacent to my property, so it's kind of in right on the edge of the wetland area, so, you know. So that's the greatest, uh, my fault.
I just think it's unfortunate that it would only be one out of these CPC articles that doesn't make it on the, on the warrant.
Well, we haven't voted on the last one yet, either.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue about that. I just think it's critical for the integrity of the building.
I actually don't think it's, I don't think it fits my litmus test, frankly. As far as it doesn't stop government and it- As far as, um, it doesn't stop government and it's not a matter of public safety. So, um, what other comments do you want to make about it? All right, all those in favor of Article nineteen?
Two, twenty? Twenty, Article twenty.
Twenty.
Uh, I'm sorry, Article twenty, yeah.
All right.
Roll and die.
Article nine.
Uh, Groden no. Did you, Chris, did you vote?
I didn't. Um, fails I at this point.
Okay, uh, we're up to current Article twenty-one.
I think we discussed it before, so I'll make a motion that we delay that to the next, uh, town meeting.
Uh, is there a second?
Change of heart there, folks?
I'll second it. I was just checking to see how much it costs.
Okay, um, what do you want, any discussion on Article twenty-one?
Why, why the cost doesn't matter? It, it doesn't? I mean, it's been approved by the CPA.
Uh, no, I was just looking at the cost, Francine, because there was part of me that was think, that, there was part of me that had the thought that this, this might just be like a very quick ending move real quick with a hundred, it's got a hundred and fifteen attached to it, so then I was, then there was part of me that had the thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, that maybe somebody will get up and talk about. Yeah.
Then what we talked about is it won't be fully constructed and operational this year anyways. So if they prepare for the spring, they'll be ready to go.
Yeah, I, I, believe me, I agree that it's, it's not a safety issue. It does not meet that criteria. I just, you know, my feeling is I'm not gonna let this one go. We delay this, but.
I agree, I think it's.
However, it's gonna get on to the next warrant.
If we have to do a.
You're gonna be pushing for it, I love it.
Yeah, we have to do a petition from the floor. I'll side with you. Uh, I think it's, it's great to support there. It's just timing.
I, I, I hear you. I, I, I don't disagree.
You've got a lot of support from the school. I think Norris will back us up on this one too, so.
Yeah.
So we have a motion from John to delay Article twenty-one, um, and Matt seconded it. Um, any further discussion? Uh, you ready to vote?
Yeah, I just want to say that I don't want this to look, be looked at that CPC is not, you know, in favor of this. This is definitely one that they have approved, so just to be clear on that, that just because it's being potentially removed this time, it's still, uh, been approved already by the CPC committee, which uh, went through a couple of iterations on it. It's already been reduced from the original plan. Uh, and if we were expecting further arguments and discussion about it and dissent about it, uh, I would have thought we would have found more of that at the CPC committee meeting itself than we did. So just to reiterate that it needs to be, um, held back if, if so for now, but, um, definitely has to be on the next one.
Can I just, can I just ask a question just with regard to the process at CPC? Did you guys revisit these under the direction of what we discussed to try to limit articles based on safety and the litmus test? Cause that, cause the reason why I'm asking is because Capitol Committee did that and we removed a bunch. So is, is what you just said based on a meeting prior?
No, meeting prior. CPC has not met in several months since all of these were approved.
Okay, so you can't speak to the fact of whether CPC would vote differently based on the fact that we're trying to have a safe town meeting?
If, if we were doing the safety criteria, no. I mean, I, we did not look at it that. It's based on the, the merits of the project itself that CPC originally approved, as, as are all of them, yeah.
Understood, understood.
Okay, the motion is to delay Article twenty-one. Uh, there's a motion and second, and any further questions or discussion? All those in favor of delaying Article twenty-one?
Fails I.
Article nine.
Roll and die.
Two, one.
Groden I. Um, how many articles that leave us with, based on this exercise?
Madam Chair.
Pardon me?
Madam Chair, I have a question. Um, my copy of the proposed articles seems to be in a previous revision and suddenly lost you at Article sixteen. Um, did you vote on the article for the church ramp?
We voted in favor of it, yes.
What, what, uh, number do you have for that?
Well, in this one, it's Article seventeen.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay.
And you voted then on the, um, CPC funding, uh, article? Sorry about this. The report of the Community Preservation Committee, the old article, something great. Thanks.
That's correct.
I think you've got the one that I had the Norris School Oven and Fire Suppression System separate.
I just forwarded him the one that we're working off of.
Thank you.
It should be in your email.
Got it.
Ed, um, I'm assuming you were taking notes along the way. What I, uh, see is that, um, the peg, was that a, uh, yea or nay?
Hang on a second.
It was a nay, I believe.
That's what I thought.
It was a nay.
Four to one.
Six was a nay.
Let's, uh. Five and six were nays.
So, yeah, five, five would have been the peg access off of this one. Yes, that was a vote to, uh, delay it. For the peg access equipment. And then Article six, which would have been the, uh, dead exclusion for the one-ton highway plow dump truck is removed from this town meeting, however, it stays on the election ballot.
Okay, so it looks like we're at eighteen.
Let's see, one, two, three, four.
So we cut three out of this whole thing? That's right.
Well, and we consolidated.
That's.
One more.
I have eighteen.
Uh, which one did we consolidate again? I don't believe we did, Francine.
Yeah.
We talked about consolidating Norris.
Cool, okay, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, I've got eighteen.
Okay.
Now it's up to Robert after this.
Okay.
Matt? Thank you for your hard work. This was painful, but, uh, it's healthier and, um, we'll do it.
Okay. So we've already approved all the articles, individuals. I don't believe we need an article for the entire warrant. Uh, does anybody feel we shorted? Or we're good?
Good.
Okay, um, are there any, is there any other agenda items that can't wait until the August fourth?
Yes, the Select Board needs to vote on the language that I sent along for the ballot question, please.
The what? The language that you sent along for the ballot question?
For the truck.
Oh.
Truck.
The dead exclusion.
The dead exclusion.
Could you read it out, Ed?
Yeah, I'm just looking in all my stuff to see if I can.
I don't think I have that.
No, I actually, I actually have it, uh, ballot question. I'll read it if I have it right here.
Was it in any?
Yeah, I'll read, I'll read it.
Okay.
It would be ballot question number two. Shall the town of Southampton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half? So-called the, uh, amounts, and I put in a hundred and forty thousand dollars, even though the DOR says that you're not supposed to put in the dollar amount, but, uh, because it's not going to be on the town meeting warrant and because I want, I want people to know it's different from the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar one. Required to pay the bond issued in order to pay costs for the purchase of a new one-ton dump truck with plow and sander body for the Highway Department, including any and all costs incidental or related thereto. And then either yes or no.
Just, just out of office tech going up, but you, I think you said a one-ton and.
Hey, John?
Five fifty, I think is a lot.
John, are the dogs in the house?
Yeah.
Yeah, what is it?
Oh, wow.
Yeah, is it a one-ton?
It's, yeah, it was classified as a one-ton in his request. I mean, the model equivalent, because we can't ask for a particular model, would be equivalent to a Ford F-five fifty.
Yeah, but a Ford F-three fifty is a one-ton. Four fifty and five fifty go beyond that. That's, I just don't want to make sure there's no technicality, that's all.
Hmm, gotcha.
Can we just put Ford F-five fifty or equivalent and leave it at that?
Yeah, I'd be more comfortable with that at this point.
Okay, and I'm gonna have to amend this. Hang on.
And I'm gonna go look for one, see what they look like on the road.
Oh, Google.
Five fifty?
I don't know what an F-five fifty looks like.
Well, put it this way, you're not gonna be able to walk up in it without a lot of help. It's very high.
Okay, so it reads, shall the town of Southampton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half? So-called the amounts, one-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars required to pay for the bond issued in order to pay costs for the purchase of a new one-ton dump truck. In parentheses, Ford F-five fifty or equivalent with plow and sander body for the Highway Department, including any and all costs incidental or related thereto.
If you didn't change anything, Ed, you still have one-ton in there.
Take, yeah.
Just, yeah, take the one-ton out and put Ford F-five fifty or equivalent. Cause a five fifty and a one-ton aren't equals. Yeah, I may be wrong, but if they call you on it on the floor, Robert, and say it's erroneous, you might have to throw it or amend it, right?
Well, then I'm gonna go back to Randall, because that's what he put in his Capitol request.
We can say it's the.
That's right. I mean, you may just ask them. But I, I know a Ford F-three fifty is a one-ton. I'm pretty sure the F-five fifty, you'd get up to a ton and a half, two-ton anyways.
Hang on a second.
Could get away with it, say one-ton or over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We spent the order, the F-five fifty truck.
According to N W M C dash C O G dot org, exterior length two-hundred.
Just looking it up.
That's hearsay, John.
What?
That's hearsay.
No, I would, I would show it to you.
No hearsay.
I mean, this goes by like payload, correct? It says that payload capacity will max out at twelve-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty pounds, which is a hell of a lot more than one-ton.
Yeah.
Yeah, when they get that high, it must be just payload and not, you know.
That's like six tons.
Yeah, it's, it's a biggie.
Yeah. Dude, I mean, at the end of the day, can, just common sense says this is absolutely way more than one-ton. One-ton of dirt and of, of sand and salt is not actually a lot of sand and salt, believe it or not.
Well, actually, a one-ton truck, you gotta take into, you know, the size of the, the rig and all that too, so you can't get really a, a full ton.
Okay, so we're just gonna then, I haven't heard back from, issued in order to pay costs for the purchase of a new Ford F-five fifty or equivalent with plow and sander body for the Highway Department, including any and all costs incidental related thereto.
We, we were three hours under our normal meeting, so I was just trying to fill in the time, ready?
You did a good job.
Thanks, John. So are we clear on the language right now?
I think so. It's not, yeah, I agree with getting the one-ton out of there, so I'm with you on that.
Okay. Okay, do you want to, um, read it again, Ed, please?
Ballot question number two. Shall the town of Southampton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half? So-called the amounts, one-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars required to pay for the bond issued in order to pay costs for the purchase of a new Ford F-five fifty or equivalent with plow and sander body for the Highway Department, including any and all costs incidental or related thereto.
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good.
Move to approve.
Any, uh, move to approve. Okay, Matt, any second?
Second.
Okay, Matt and then John, any further discussion or question? Pardon?
John was the second.
Yes. Any further questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the language on the ballot question?
Two, one.
Fails I.
Roll and die.
Article nine.
Groden I. Okay, thank you. And any other art, any other items that cannot wait until the, um, the next meeting on August fourth?
Uh, just back on my, my birthday issue, I just got a note from the Hendrix suggesting August fifth, if possible. So it would be maybe at four in the afternoon.
Okay, see, oh, you're back on the birthday thing there.
I'm sorry, yes. If we had to, if we had to schedule another meeting, that's, I just thought I'd bring it up. I mean, it won't be a real meeting, but just so that we can have it. August fifth, uh, which is the Wednesday right after our last meeting, our next meeting, at around maybe four in the afternoon.
We have a council on aging meeting at four o'clock on the fifth of August.
How about the twelfth then would be the option, I guess?
Yep, that looks good.
Okay, let me get back to them then. I'll relay it.
Okay, I imagine that Janet or someone from the council might want to be there, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Joan and, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so we don't have any other items. Uh, August fourth is the next meeting. It's the only one we have before the town meeting, as of right now anyway. And in that meeting will be a seven-oh-five public hearing about, uh, any changes to the quorum requirement for the ATM. Uh, next, we will have open time for the public. Select Board Reserves a portion of its meeting for public comment encourages participation. So at this time, I will ask if there is anybody on the call that would like to speak.
Quick, no. Well, open time of the public's closed.
There we go.
I'm sorry, did, uh, Tammy, did you want to say anything?
I said I'm good. I don't.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear you say that. Okay, um, we, we did get, go ahead.
And would you take one more action, uh, since we're in a Zoom meeting and we physically, no one can actually see that you're signing this thing? Would you take one more vote, please, that you are going to, uh, officially sign this warrant as it was amended and, uh, I will, I will, I will somehow try to connect with everyone tomorrow to get it signed tomorrow?
Can we not just authorize Ed to do it?
No, it's gotta be signed by the Select Board.
It's gotta be signed by the Select Board. Okay, so a motion then to approve the warrant, uh, as amended tonight.
Well, not approve, but to sign.
Okay, to sign the warrant. So move.
Fails seconded.
Okay, so Francine and then Chris, any discussion? All those in favor of signing the warrant?
Two, one.
Fails I.
Article nine.
Roll and die.
Groden I.
You weren't as nice to me tonight. You varied from your usual routine of eyes.
I know.
Yeah.
I know. I know.
Hey, Matt, what's that subtle advertising behind you?
Oh my God, it's my background now that I can't undo.
Okay, so, uh, we do have a letter then from the public. Um, we did receive a letter from Geraldine Swanson. I'm not sure if we had read that last time or not.
Yeah.
Um, relative to the town meeting, I believe we did. We read it right before we were discussing the, um, warrant articles.
Yes.
But we did receive an article, we did receive a letter from Nilda Cohen. Do you want to read that? Do you have that handy?
I don't have that one with me.
Okay, it is part of the agreement of the meeting, though, that, um, all letters be read, um, does it say, at the next Select Board meeting?
Yes.
Um, I do believe I have that handy. Um, I do believe I have that handy. Um, would you like me to read it, or would, um, would you like me to send it to you for reading, uh, Ed?
Well, I've gotta, I'm gonna have to go to my other computer anyway, so I'll look and print that out and read it.
Okay, I have it right in front of me, though. Do you want me to just send it to you, or do you want me to read it?
Why don't you read it? Because if you send it to me, I've gotta go, it won't come across on this computer. I don't have, I don't have email access.
All right, this is dated July 27, 2020. It's to the select board. It's a memo. Having watched a couple of the select board Zoom meetings, primarily to discuss the FY 21 budget, I feel the need to comment on its content and process. I will start by first asking why this review process started late. We are approximately a month away from the annual town meeting. Public documents have not been released. Why were department head, fiscal staff, and public, why were department heads, fiscal staff, and public able to get information to review in advance of your meetings? I think it means why weren't they? Uh, why has there not been information printed or on the website to get the community informed? While the Zoom meeting format is what we currently have to communicate, it's very difficult to read information on the screen or to follow what is being discussed. Logging in does not guarantee you will be able to ask questions. Not every question will be unmuted, is granted, totally unacceptable. Marlene Groden, Chair, stated there had been a difficult period without a finance committee in place to meet and conduct business without a quorum. It has been a challenge trying to find individuals to volunteer. There's a lot on everyone's plate, however, when the select board, a few years ago, decided to allow a few chosen individuals to change the budget submitted by the finance committee. Without their knowledge, this changed the course of the committee. It was a wake-up call to how their contribution was regarded. If your work is not valued, your opinion not respected, you ask why serve? The committee at the time, under the leadership of Michael Rosenberg, was first-rate. They had the expertise, commitment, and interest of the town. Not having a finance committee with oversight of the financial activities is dangerous. As elected board, they are charged with a very important role. Why not form another interim committee? You did so in the case of Celebrate Southampton Annual Town Meeting Committee to help with coordination of the meeting at Labree Field, a bylaw and open space committee, all who handle administrative duties and report to the select board, much, most of which, I believe, are very important. I have served on finance, select board, and various other boards. This is the first time I witnessing a disturbing shift in the process. To start this review in late July, when we already said that, uh, the summer is not the best time to bring important information to voters for action. Secondly, you limit staff participation if away. For years, the budget review would begin with an email or memo sent from the town administrator outlining the process and deadlines. This usually occurred in January. There was always a push to start as early as possible. Firming revenue numbers from the state and internal review by the finance team and analysis were necessary to present the best budget to the voters. Documents were regularly shared. Next step before town meeting was a meeting scheduled by the select board to present the budget they felt comfortable going to town meeting with. This year, for obvious reasons, things have changed, however, you were still responsible for making information available and being inclusive in the process. For months, I have asked, what are we doing? When I saw at the meeting, there were spreadsheets. I asked if copies had been made available before the meeting. I think a few said they got copies last minute, others had not. There was Ed Gibbons' version, followed by Matt Rowland's version. Trying to follow as Matt presented his version was difficult, even more difficult to see the numbers. My impression, Matt, was directing the information more to the select board than the, than to others who were logging in or viewing live. I have requested a copy from Ed Gibson, awaiting the latest version. I asked if Matt Rowland had made the spreadsheet available to staff. I was told Matt stated he did not feel comfortable forwarding it to a town official for release. They should get it from Ed Gibson, Mr. Rowland. This is a public document. In the past few years, another change, the twice-a-month department head meetings were no longer taking place. The new town administrator did not continue the practice. Maybe scheduled a meeting and had a limited agenda with limited discussion. These meetings had been very beneficial. Agendas would reflect current updates throughout the year. Employees felt better prepared to plan and to respond at the moment, um, to, to at-the-moment operational needs. The budget was a huge part of these meetings. Staff felt vested, contributing, and responding to the overall needs of the community. We are not in this predicament due to the virus. We are not in this predicament because there has not been an active finance committee. We're in this predicament because we started late and lost valuable time. The budget process should have been started in January. What happened in February, official closure occurred in March. Is the position of the board based on strong financial calculations? Have we received guidance from Department of Local Services? Do we have our cherry sheet? Is there a CARES Act money's available for 2021? How much has, uh, the town received this year in COVID-19, this year, 2020 support? What areas of funds are being allocated? How is the town accounting for these funds? Is the documentation of these approved allocated funds, and how have they been used? There is constant information coming from the Commonwealth as taxpayers. We should be able to get that information. Going to staff as the first line of cuts and not looking at everyone is irresponsible. Reducing hours for some resulting in losing benefits is something we have always wanted to avoid. We are bare bones in all departments. Without much discussion, we cut the administrative health agent, who is 10 hours. How could you think, uh, during this, how, how you could think during this pandemic, this is acceptable, is beyond any reasonable person. The calls, emails from CDC and public questions are nonstop. The work done by the health department elsewhere during this time is 24/7. Every time there is a news report, people have questions they want and need answered. This is important as it helps reduce anxiety. The guidelines and changes need to be communicated to the public. CDC is constantly sending emails with updates and new guidelines, which need to be communicated and or implemented. This is all on top of their regular duties. The assessor is down to one. The assessor still gets the calls and requests for information, of course. Home sales and new construction continue. The town clerk is down one person. Any year, many changes. We cross for additional resources, or information continues. Every time you cut, you put, uh, AM additional, you put an additional burden on the department head. The treasurer is not able to retain staff long enough due to our hiring salary range. They do payroll, tax bills, water bills. From an audit standpoint, there should be a separation of duties. It takes several years for employees to acquire the skill level involved when working in a municipal form of government. We have lost a wealth of committed people. Our town accountant, with her years of experience, analytical skills, and infinite thinking, has proven to be a great asset. There will be additional tracking of COVID-19 funds reporting. An override is not the answer. I know preparing a budget every year is challenging. Difficult decisions have to be made. Communicated and listening to what your staff and community have to say is very important, very important. Not recognizing the contribution made by folks who daily keep everything running is not reflective of good leadership. People are your greatest asset. I keep hearing concerns about the East Street Bridge. What is the status on this project? When is work starting? What is the current thinking on the board with regard to public safety complex? We started the committee in 2011. We have had two failed votes. In my opinion, Architect hired was not the right match. Proposed cost at that time was 14 million. This is a major concern. I was on the committee, and I'm aware of how critical addressing, how critical addressing is. We have employees working in buildings which are structurally in question, environmentally, workspace, health concerns. I continue to be impressed with how the departments continue to perform. If Southampton had a major crisis, we would be in trouble. I know we have mutual aid agreements with surrounding towns, but other communities have been able to build a safety complex. Why can't, can we not get our act together? I am very concerned with the direction this board has taken. The most seasoned member is John Martin. He has been through tough times at times. He has been the voice of reason. He certainly knows better. I also realize he's outnumbered on Puzzle, Whitechad Road, a nurse who did not object, who did not object to cutting the health department, who did not object. Community health, especially during a pandemic, pandemic should be paramount. From some of the discussions among the board, I have the impression individuals are pushing a personal agenda. This pandemic is not going to be a one-year event. We have to work on a multi-year financial plan. We have to be prepared as best as possible. Southampton is not exempt from feeling the effects of an economic downturn. We know it is coming. We are all in this together. We can all make a difference. We have the right to be heard. Nilda Cohen, Southampton resident, 35-plus years. So I'd like to thank Nilda for writing this letter. I think that, you know, I've learned a long time ago with, um, patient satisfaction, the best thing you can do is to, um, close your mouth and open your ears. So, um, I appreciate, um, her comments. I think it's hard when, uh, we put in all the time and hours, um, you know, to hear, you know, somewhat critical feedback, but, um, certainly, we can discuss this if you'd like. Some people on the board may not be familiar with what she had made reference to, um, relative to the uh, disagreement that happened between the select board and the finance committee. John Martin was the only one at the time on the board. You know, it's a tough, uh, process, and so would anybody like to comment on this?
Well, I was on the finance committee at that time, and yes, it was, it was very, um, demoralizing. It made all the effort that we put in, um, you know, appear to be of no value. And I do agree that the finance committee, and John was on it and chaired the finance committee for a number of years, has a very important function. It would make the work certainly of the select board and everyone, if we had a functioning group, a lot, a lot easier, a lot better. I mean, it's, they're tasked with, you know, really analyzing line by line, meeting with department heads and so forth. It would have made this process a lot better, a lot easier, probably would have resulted in this, this budget being produced a lot sooner. But there were a lot of unknowns this year. We still, I mean, we're passing a budget, we're presenting a budget this year that we know is gonna be revised, because we don't have all of the information. This is a very unusual year. I'm not trying to make any excuses for, you know, the timing of this, but, um, I'm not even sure that this estate even have their budget yet. I think everybody is in this kind of wait-and-see mode. And that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Okay.
And just to add to it, we're having our first, uh, finance committee meeting tomorrow night at 5:30, I assume, so hopefully we'll get these people re-energized and back into the process.
Yeah, I mean, it's very difficult. You know, we see that from our, uh, PCFs and PRFs. It's been very challenging to get finance committee members. I think finally, I think I challenge the board to try to recruit people, and thankfully, we were successful in recruiting a couple more people, and now we have a committee of five. Ideally, would have, we would have had this committee, you know, months ago, but, um, in spite of our continuing encouragement for people to step up, um, you know, it, it was very difficult to have happen. Whether it had anything to do with, uh, the history uh, between the select board and the finance committee, I can't, I can't speak to that. I think that Nilda feels that it has, having been, you know, part of that in the past, but, um, I guess we'll move forward, you know, with a new board, and there are a lot of very qualified people on this finance committee, and I hope, uh, many of them uh, choose to run for election in September.
Yeah, and one other thing, and anybody who's been around a while realizes that it's the same group of volunteers that, you know, get dispersed in all the groups, because, uh, we can't find a lot of new people that want to come forward. And, you know, the more people that want to come forward and be part of the process, the, the better it is. I mean, and to Nilda's credit, she's been on a lot of different boards, uh, and, you know, you can agree or disagree with, with her, but she's been very active and presents her side of it like everybody should. But we could sure use a lot more people to come forward and learn the process and, you know, get involved.
Yeah, I welcome anybody's, uh, participation, and I think that when it comes to trying to recruit board members and committee members, I think, um, I think that, um, sometimes, uh, going out and individually recruiting people, because I think, um, unless you've been involved, you may not even know how to access, um, so I think just, uh, going up and just telling people what the process is. I mean, somebody approached me about an open position, and I had to explain about, okay, so you get the signatures, and you have this, you know, date to get the signatures, and if not, you could do a write-in. So people that haven't been involved don't understand the process. It's only the same people that have been involved who are knowledgeable, so I think it takes a little bit of mentoring people into the positions.
Yeah.
I think that, um, I mean, I, you know, as far as, you know, cutting the, um, health department, I mean, the board of health decides what to do with the funds that they have in terms of the grant money that they got, and also, I mean, I don't feel good about cutting the police department either, so, I, I, you know, I don't, I don't, I thought that we were somewhat, at least this point along the way, somewhat across the board, um, I think pitting department against department at this level, when we don't know where we're going in terms of additional cuts, I think would have caused a lot more problem than, than trying to say, well, this is, this department's more important. I mean, people have done that, towns have done that, closing the library, you know, making decisions like that, but I think we, um, I think everybody in this board, um, you know, has a lot of good intentions and works very, very hard. Um, I think I'll take what she says. I think we could have done some things earlier, and I think, you know, I, I, I take what she says, and I'll, I'll sit with that a bit.
Yeah, and I, I think, too, we should recognize a, a lot of the work that had been done even prior with the finance committee that was struggling but existing, and then all the work that's been done with the capital improvement committee, seeing the hours. Matt, I know you guys are spent looking at the various requests from the departments and scrubbing the numbers, trying to figure out what to even recommend to us. I mean, it's, it hasn't been just a, a quick process that, you know, maybe it could have started earlier, but it certainly has followed, from my understanding, a pretty lengthy process, as is usual in these situations.
You know, what I, I find sad personally is, you're out there talking to people, just in general friends or people you're meeting, and ask them what they think about something that's going on in the town, and they'll look at you like, what are you, what are you talking about? No idea what you're talking about, and it's a little scary, because you think everybody is informed on what's going on, because of the Zooms and also the recordings, but a lot of people, and I don't want to put a percentage, really don't get involved, because they're so busy with their life, they're figuring somebody else's handling it. And that's, in my opinion, not the greatest way to go, go through your life as a, a resident of the town.
Yeah, well, I think it just goes back to the whole issue of communication, and how do we get the word out about what we are doing? I mean, we've got East Hampton Media, we've got, you know, the newsletter that Robert puts out. All of that is great, but we're still, somehow, there's a whole portion of the town that doesn't tune into either of those things, let alone our, our, uh, regular meetings. So I don't know how we reach them, but I, there's gotta be a way to just sort of say, hey, here's an update, here's where we are. You know, whether it's the website, that's one thing, but again, whether people look at it, I don't know. Um, we're finding, like, even with the signs, you know, the marquees that we put out for the, for the survey, you know, we're, we're gonna, oh, you know, just take a message off for a few days, because we're finding people are not reading them. They, you know, we've run into the same thing of, have you taken the survey? It's like, what survey? It's like, how many more times could we talk about it? So I, I mean, there's just a whole core of people, I think, that just don't tune in to how the town functions around them, because of whatever's going in in their lives, and I don't know what the magical communication strategy is, but we're, we're obviously missing a whole group of people that just don't know what we do.
And, and I think what I've witnessed, you know, since I've been on the select board for two years and, and finance for six years prior to that, what I'm seeing happening now, I think, is a lot of, a lot more transparency, I made possible, I think, I think just the nature of how the meetings are being run, and I think Zoom has, has helped to do that. It's unfortunate, as Chris said, that maybe not as many people as we would hope were taking, you know, or tuning into these things, but I really, I really think it's, it's a very open dialogue that we have. And I, I, I would hope that people would, would see that difference, because I, I'm not saying that because I'm part of it. I'm saying it because I sit back and I, I watch and I listen myself, and I'm seeing a difference.
Well, there was another question in the letter about the East Street Bridge, so, I mean, we talked about, um, we really should have a public hearing and just let people know, like, this is what happened, and this is what the town voted based on what happened, and it had to be, you know, objectively reviewed because of the conflict of interest at Mastodot. I mean, I just think that, um, people travel on East Street and, and can, you know, visibly see how bad it is. They look at the bridge and they see it's a mess, and they keep hearing about the East Street Bridge, but everything, you know, tends to be slow, and of course, in this case, things are slower because of what happened. So I do think that after the town meeting, I think we should have a meeting and make it more of a sort of public hearing, um, and, and just really publicize it widely, that, you know, we'll be discussing and getting an update, and perhaps have the gentleman from VSB come and, uh, speak to the public directly. So I, I think that would be a good thing. I think there's a lot of interest in that.
Would, would you want to consider doing something, I, I don't want to make this up, but do something quarterly, like an update for people in the town, because there are numbers, things, you know, the safety complex is another big question that's out there. The Greenway is another one. I, I think people would like to have, um, you know, some, some information, and hopefully, eventually, some closure on it.
I'd love to see the results of the, um, the Master Plan Survey. I don't know if people were asked, you know, what's the best way for you to get information? Because, you know, I knew, we know, some people get it from social media. We know some people read the Gazette. We know some people go to our website. I know some people go to the dump a lot, you know? So I don't know if, um, if that was, you know, it would be interesting to find out, um, how people do get their information and their level of interest. But I think, yeah, I think we should talk about that. I think, how do we disseminate information to the public around, um, all the many, many topics that we talk about every couple of weeks.
Right, because they're all not gonna tune in for five or six hours every other Tuesday.
Yeah, for sure.
It just doesn't work, so we have to do the Reader's Digest version of these meetings for people to bring up the speed.
And just, just one thing, I mean, if, if people have looked at the survey and have filled it out, some of these same issues, East Street is not on there, but the, the public safety complex is on there, the Greenway is on there, solar in-town is on there, the issue of, you know, increased broadband, et cetera. There's topics that were brought up as potential infrastructure, um, priorities, uh, that are on the survey, saying, you know, what is, how do you feel? What do you think is, is really a priority? So I think the survey will help us kind of focus our energies once we get it done. I, I think that will give us an idea of where we should be, you know, spending our time.
That's something we could bring. That's something we could bring up at the ATM. We need a hundred and some people there.
I know, but it's not on the, on the ballot, on the warrant, right? So I mean, all we were thinking of, and I don't know if we can do this, we were just gonna put out a big sign right at the end of, of the roadway into the ball field saying, did you do your survey? Please do your survey. Um, because that, that's the other thing. But we, we've got, honestly, we, we counted last night, we had a meeting. Uh, we've got 578 in, which is almost, almost 10%. So that's okay. I, I want better, I want better, uh, honestly, but, um, that's, that's nice in a month's time. So in the second month that we have open, I'm hoping we can get another 2, 300.
It didn't take that long to fill out either.
It's very quick, it really is, yeah.
Robert, under time.
The moderator, uh, after the meeting is dissolved and thanking all those who helped, can thank those who are manning the table at the end of the driveway off of Strong Road, handing out surveys to those who want them as the cars drive out.
Oh.
Do we have to put it at the end of the road or can we put it closer to when people go in?
We had, well, not, not real close to the gate, uh, maybe when you come into the driveway. But I think it's best, uh, not to set precedence, but having it as people are leaving at the end of the, uh, at the end of the driveway.
Okay, good, good to know, thank you.
Okay, any other comments, um, about anything? I'm pretty sure then we're at the point where we can go ahead and have a motion to adjourn. So move. Uh, Francine, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second. I'll second, I'll second.
Okay, Chris, Francine made the motion, Chris seconded. Um, all those in favor?
Fishman eye.
All's eye.
Roll and die.
Art nine.
And road nine. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, meeting.
I will make these changes and send them out to you tonight and I'll make arrangements to get your signatures tomorrow.
Good, that's wonderful. Thanks so much, Ed.
You're welcome.
Bye, bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Night.